So. Okay, thank you. This meeting is now being recorded and. We will proceed with any public input on items not on the agenda. Hearing none. Uh, go to the chairman's report. Uh, we held a public forum last Tuesday that was. Pretty well attended. We had about sixty eight participants by my count at the highest level of participation. And uh. It was a long meeting. It was a detailed meeting. We covered a lot of different things. I want to uh. Correct a statement that I made during that meeting because I was not speaking for the entire board. And that is that any monies that were. Saved as a result of the move to regional dispatch would be. Uh, reallocated within public safety. Uh, that has not been voted on by the board and um. We would have to have a form of vote of that for that statement to hold. So. That was an error on my part, and I want to correct the record on that. Okay. I don't think I have any other announcements. Uh, we will. Proceed with. The first item on the agenda. Oh, yes, the other announcements that I do have is uh that. Item three on the agenda tonight, the Christian Hill Conservation Restriction. Uh, we may delay that a little bit. Uh, there are two people from. Town committee and town staff that wanted to speak to that issue, and they are in another meeting. Um, they should be freed up. I believe it's seven thirty. Um, and this item. For Christian Hill is scheduled for seven fifteen. So uh, if it happens that we get to seven fifteen and we finish the first two agenda items. Um, we will move over Christian Hill momentarily um to do the B O S policies review and any other matters. Um, until those two uh individuals are able to be here. They are Sue Brown. And Steve Gang from Conservation Commission. We will hear that tonight, but we may not hear it in order. Okay. Uh, the first item on the agenda is correspondence and town website policy. This is a. Second reading of this document. And um. I've created a uh. A blown up uh document so that the public can view this while we're talking about it. Um. And I'm going to share my screen to share that document if there's no objection. This document is the last track changes that I received this afternoon. And um, for clarity, um, I have left it with. Um, except all changes. If you have any changes that you want to discuss tonight, we can certainly. Talk about that and change them as we go. So. There's the document. And. This uh is in regard to. How the board handles email um in light of. Both town policy and uh state law. Uh, for public records purposes. Um. These. Two policies and then a uh. Third area that's. Um, a new practice for the board um were first discussed at our August fourteenth planning session. Uh, and they were. The policies were further refined through discussion on our September eighth meeting two weeks ago. Um, this is the second reading of this policy and uh if we. Develop it into an acceptable format without any significant changes. Then um other than that's already been changed, we will um have a vote on it tonight. Otherwise, we move it on to our next meeting. So the first part of the policy is regarding posting um. On postings to the town website. And um, there's three parts to that. The Board of Selectment recognizes it's the town website as a communication device. Established for town staff, boards and committees to communicate information to the public, particularly residents of the town. Of Manchester by the Sea. The town website is not considered a public forum for the interchange of commentary, opinion, support. Or objections to the decisions of the town and its boards. As such, the Board of Selectmen has concluded that comments from the public will not be posted. On the website of the town of Manchester by the Sea. Um, this is something we discussed in some detail last week, asking two weeks ago. Um, are there any further comments to that as written from the board? Okay. Um, the second part of this. Is um. A policy regarding the receipt of email addressed to the town of Manchester boards and committees. I should probably read boards and committees members. Um. But the first item is the members of town boards and committee and. That's an error. That should be committees. Um. Acknowledge that emails sent to official Manchester by the Sea email addresses. That is um at Manchester dot M A dot U S by definition become a matter of public record. Um, the second part of this is that emails that are sent. To the board, to board or committee members, personal email addresses which refer to the businesses or actions of the board or committee. Are also a matter of public record per the public records laws of the state, and that's the citation. And the third uh part of this is for the purposes of identifying, collecting all email correspondence in response to a public records request. Board and committee members are required to forward correspondence received. And their personal email addresses related to their official town capacity. To a town address created for each committee. These files generally will be accessed only pursuant to a public records request, subpoena or judicial order. Discovery, discovery request in litigation or other instance where production is required. So let's take any comments and questions on that second point.
Jeff, I may.
Becky.
It's, it's nothing serious. It's just um that first bullet point. I think if we're. Capitalizing boards and commissions on some, we should do it on all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jeff.
Um. If I may.
You may.
Um, I object strenuously to the word generally in the. Third bullet, last sentence. Um. This, you are, you are asking people to give up people who have, who sent me email at my private address. Um. Having. Having that tracked, I can, I can understand, but I don't want. Random people being able to access those uh without having gone through a public process. And the generally just completely eliminates any protection that the rest of the sentence gives. I unhappy with being required to forward things because part of the public records process, record access process. Is that the owner of the record is, is allowed to argue that it's not a public record or it's subject to some of the exemptions. Uh, to the exemptions that are listed in the bylaw. In the state law. Um. And. I unhappy because I don't think the town has the same interest in protecting the privacy of my friends that I do. I'm willing to go along with it provided that. Access to those special email accounts uh is only through a legal process. Not generally to a legal process. Because I don't know what else is included in general. Yeah, that's the word.
Um, do other board members want to comment on this?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
Likewise.
So just strike the word generally. Um, I would like to make a comment on the, the requirement for forwarding um the emails. Um. I, I would just observe that if we didn't have this policy. Then whenever we received a public records request. In order to satisfy that, the records access officer would have to contact every. Um, potentially related board or commission member and say. Have you got any fives? And they would have to say go fish or no. As opposed to simply satisfying the. Request. And that's why I think this is a necessary aspect of this policy.
If. May I respond?
Sure, go ahead.
Um. I don't know how to phrase it, but if it were possible to, to notify um. The people involved um in a records request, that is, the person who sent. The email to a board member and the board member so that they knew that this was happening and, and could. Argue that, that. That those particular, that particular communication was in fact not um accessible under records request. Any, I. Having trouble. Articulating it clearly, but.
No, I get it. You, you wanted, you want the ability to be able to um. Uh, make an argument regarding your communication that was sent specifically to you.
Yes. And probably I would like the person who sent it to me to be able to make an argument.
So just a quick comment, um, if I may, Jeff.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, the. The, the presumption is that all emails sent to public officials and staff are public record unless. There's an exemption. Um, and so what a lot of communities do and a lot of staff do is put a, a note at the bottom of, of every email. That, that alerts people that if they're sending an email. Um, they should not expect confidentiality. And so that is a, a general heads up to folks. Um. That if, if they're worried about that, then they should make a phone call instead.
So. Every piece of email that I send should have. Um, that on it. You know, regardless, and I should expect anybody who want to send me email. To know before they send it, before I respond that that exists.
It's, it's the law, Anne. I can't, I can't rewrite the law. That's what the law says. So what we're dealing with. We're dealing with what the state mandates us to do.
If it were kept in my account and had to be searched, searched for there, I would get to. Um. Argue that. Uh, it does fall under some exception.
That is true. And you can, you can do that. What, what is being asked for here is any. Email that pertains to town business. Be kept in the town. Uh, email account.
This is a problem because this policy is not just for the Board of Selectmen. Um, this is for all town boards and committees. And with the exception of a couple of boards. Most boards and committees do not have. Town email addresses. Um, otherwise, we could just tell our friends, look, if you have anything to say to me about the board, send it to my town email address. And that's.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a done deal. Um.
And, and I could probably say, if you have anything to say to me about town business. Call me.
I mean, you could say that. Um. But.
Okay, I.
I, I understand the point that you're trying to make, Anne, and um, and. I find it. Really hard when people make a mistake and pick up my. Um, my personal email address and write to me about something that has to do with um the town. And um. I forward those to myself at. Um, at Manchester dot M A dot U S. And then they are part of the public record. Um, and I tell them, please only address me, and then I write back to them and say, please only address me at this address. Um.
Okay, um, I, I said at the beginning that my major concern was the generally, as long as that struck, I can live with this.
And. I'm going to take out. The E G. Since that wasn't a. Real. I mean, the, the example was taken away, so um. We don't need it. We don't need to have the example. But. I mean, would it? Greg, would it make sense to put instead of. After a town address created for each committee. Um. Under the direction of the. Um, the records officer?
It, it's fine to do that. I, I don't think it's a necessity, but, um, but that gives it a home in a, in a place where it is um.
Because one of the point, one of the points that I'm sorry, go ahead, Greg. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, it just, it gives it, like I said, it gives it a home and it gives a, a person that the committee member can, can call or, or. Visit to, to get some clarity if, if it's needed.
Okay. Um. Because one of the points that was made last week was who's going to have access to these committee files? And initially, we had said the chair would have access to it. Um. Because it's. The chair's role is to make sure that information is moved about that needs to be moved about. Um, but there was an objection to that. And. I'm still uh concerned about. Um. Information not being brought forth either to the committee or to the chair. Um. That comes into a private, private email account. Um, but. I also am very aware of what the privacy concerns are here. So. The formal title is town records access. What's the formal title?
Records access officer.
Officer, yes, officer.
Okay. Um.
Uh, question, Jeff.
Yes, yes.
The, uh, I mean, the general public doesn't necessarily know this. Is there anything on our website anywhere under, you know, maybe even for each board or committee? Because each border committee generally has a chairperson and a, I think it's got a phone number. Um, that where that person can be reached, and maybe there should be some sort of a statement. Uh, people just don't know this. They don't. And even if people had. Town emails, I tend to think if somebody knows somebody, they probably use their personal email anyway. But um. Oftentimes, the website is connected with any kind of communication that somebody has because they wants to do because they have an opinion about. Something in a, in a topic in a specific area, and they, they want to know who's on the committee, et cetera. I'm just wondering if that's something, I don't think it's going to change the copy here. But we've got to get people more aware of this somehow.
It's really challenging because as Anne's pointed out and I'm aware of as well, there are exemptions to disclosure. Um, in chapter sixty six, section ten to ten B. Um. And chapter four. Um. So. It's tough to do complicated um and have it be clear. Um, I agree with you. I agree with you, John. Um. And I don't think it's a one-time deal. I think it's something that. The town needs to be made aware of on a regular basis. Um, like at least annually. Um. I mean, we could publish this policy in the cricket. We could publish this policy on our website. Um.
People, people, you know, people communicate with folks on boards when they have an issue.
Yep.
And to put something out there and then expect, oh, a year from now, I want to email somebody something, and maybe it's a friend on a board or something. They're not going to remember that. It's got to be. In front of them at the moment or close to the moment when they say, I want to communicate. Which is why I'm, I'm looking at some sort of a, you know, small in italics disclaimer or, or statement. On, on each board's um, you know, homepage. This is the, this is the chairperson here, the people or whatever, and uh. Um. Emails are public record.
We could have a general statement with a link to the policy.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, I, I think that, I think that's. I think that's not an unreasonable thing. Do other board members uh agree with that?
Sure.
All right, John, do you want to pose that as a motion?
Yes. Um, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we have a, I guess it's a disclaimer or a statement. That um should be on the website. Um, at, at each, at the homepage of each board referring uh to a. Uh, policy, the policy with regard to emails that are sent to board, board chairpersons and board members and board members.
Okay, um. Second.
Second.
Okay, so. Motion moved by John Brown and seconded by Eli Bowling. Um, any discussion of that uh? That request? Okay, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bowler?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Um. I'd like to suggest that that should go above the names of the people who are on the board. Um. On their web, on their web uh. Town webpage. And not just be randomly placed into text because I've gone to look for names of all the members on the board. Um, and sometimes they're way down the bottom of a whole lot of information that's important information. Um. But uh, if somebody wants to write to somebody or be in touch with somebody who's on that board, they're probably going to see it, and they're on the town webpage. They're probably going to seek out that person's name. Um, um, and I think if we have it in close proximity to that, that's going to be important. Um. Okay. These are the changes that we've talked about, taking out generally, dropping this uh. This orphaned E G and uh placing in the text under the supervision of the towns where town records access officer. Um, those are all acceptable. Okay. Um, then I'm going to actually. Accept that change. Cut that. And cut that. Okay. Um, all right. So the third part of this is new practice regarding the correspondence section of any publicized agenda for meetings of. Town of Manchester by the Sea boards and committees and um. Town council raised a question about whether other boards have a correspondence section. In their agendas. And I couldn't immediately answer that question. Um.
So many, many do, Jeff. Not, not everybody, but many do.
Okay, all right, so um. I think we should hold off on any vote on this portion of it until we've uh. Uh, put this particular language out to all the boards and committees. So that they've had a chance to look at it and maybe review it in one of their meetings. Um. Uh, we could adopt it specifically tonight if we're going to um adopt the. Other changes to the two policies. Um, we're going to adopt this as well as a practice. Um, for specifically for the Board of Selectmen and then send this out to all the other boards and committees so that we can do that at a later date. Um, how would you like to handle this?
I don't think there's a rush. I think uh sending it out to the other boards um would be fine.
Okay, um.
Jeff.
I noted, go ahead.
Um. Could we separate the policy that we've just gone through from this, which is a practice and, and make. Accept the first and continue the second?
And the reason for continuing the second?
Is that we want to get it out to other boards.
Well, we have two policies, and one is about the website and one is about.
The two, right, the two policies, sorry.
So separate the two policies from the, from the practice. Sure. Sure. Done. I'll send copies of both out to everybody. Yes, sir.
On the text that just got moved to the new blank document. I did have some comments in the last bullet item in it.
Okay, hang on one sec. Yeah, so the two policies are separated and we can take care of those possibly tonight. Eli, go ahead on, on the practice.
Can you open that? So while I can look at my version of it, so.
Can you see this? Wait, I'm sorry. Can you see this?
No.
It disappeared. Okay, all right. So let me stop sharing screen. And then I'll go back and I'll share this screen. How's that?
Yeah. Okay, so the last bullet, I see a couple of problems with it. One is in the previous document, it became a little bit redundant because it was restating what we previously stated, but it didn't. I think it's important to qualify that we're not declaring correspondence to be received as a public document by virtue of us saying it is, it just is. So if we were going to have that in there, I would again refer to Massachusetts General Law. And second is that second sentence, after I read it a couple of times, didn't starting out with most correspondences didn't really necessarily make sense to me because it's not true of our correspondence section. Our correspondence typically is not associated with an agenda topic and if it lands in the correspondence section, it may become a future agenda item. So I thought that that
Maybe we make a separate bullet there, Eli, and say correspondence associated with a particular agenda topic will be noted generally as part of the discussion of the topic during the meeting. And not appear and not appear in public notifications.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Sure. That's all I had to say there.
Wait a minute. Well, then, then then do we have to publish all email correspondence that were received? As part of the board book?
No, I mean, the first bullet item covers, but it's going to be in there.
I think we dropped that whole thing at the end.
Or move the first sentence up into the policy.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is that we drop this in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any objection to that?
It's mostly sort of explanatory enough to cause.
Well, it gets into a very mushy area in terms of all emails associated with an agenda item would then have to be noted and be part of the public record. They are part of the public record, but they don't get published in the board book. And we're talking about publishing the board book for public for the public to see what we're talking about. So any, any objections to removing that? Done. Okay. This is going to be the document that gets sent, this document on that you're viewing now. It's going to be the document that gets sent out to all boards and committees for their review and comment with a 30-day return. Does that make sense?
Since it's now a separate document, perhaps we should make a reference to which state law.
Any other comments about this one? Okay, I'm going to stop sharing that. I want to just note that I'm sorry, Carly, I've got a share bar that's on top of on top of the rest of the Zoom screen. So I did not see your hand up. Let me, let me call on you now. Carly, would you like to?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I just have a quick question. How, how is this? Is this a change to the open meeting laws or just in addition to the open meeting laws or? That's my question.
Is what a change.
Okay.
Is, is, I'm not sure what you're referring to when you say this.
Um, the things that we've been discussing about the changes to the, you know, way to communicate if you want to have it be official, like an, an official comment to the town or?
Well, actually, it's a clarification and that's why we've done it as policy. It's a clarification of two things. One, in terms of the policies. One is regarding the town website and the other is how email is handled by the town. This is not related to open meeting law. It is related in terms of the emails to what constitutes in Massachusetts General Law, a public record and who has access to that public record and how. So this is a clarification that the email policy is a clarification for boards and committees in the town and for, for residents. Any email that you send to member of a board or committee is a matter of public record once you send it. And that's, that's state law. That's not anything that we run as a town bylaw. In regard to the town website, that's not state law. That's the policy of the Board of Selectment for the town website. And, and again, it's a clarification about what the purpose of the website is and how we will handle information from the public on the website. The third thing that we're talking about is just a change and, and, and a clarification of how correspondence, the correspondence section of the agenda will be handled. And correspondence is really a misnomer for that section of the agenda. They really public notifications of items of important public interest. But they're not agenda items. They don't rise up to the level of being an agenda item for us to discuss. So Comcast change and things like that. So that those things get noted to the public in the agenda, but they're not discussed by the board. Does that help answer your question?
It does. Yes, thank you.
Okay, you know, this, none of this has to do directly or indirectly from my point of view with open meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your question. I want to also pick up, there was a comment in the chat which I do not disable from Axel Magnuson about why not give all town board members an official email address? We've been down that road talking about that, Axel. It's expensive in two ways. We get charged per email address that we have. That would be a predictable year-to-year expense, but there's also a maintenance cost. I became Chair of the Board the beginning of July and since that time, I think four or five board or committee members have resigned from their committee appointment prior to the end of their term. Every year we have reappointments of people or new appointments if they don't wish to sign up again. So there would be a lot of IT cost in separating on an email address for somebody who is no longer a member of the committee and assigning a new email address to new members of the committee. That's why for the most part, most committees in town have their own personal email as their address. And there's I believe at this point, every chair has a Manchester dot MA dot US. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, I believe so. I know that we were working on that. I think that's been completed.
We, we, we asked that that be included. So if you write to the chair, then it's real clear. If you write to an individual board member at their personal address, that's what we're trying to deal with in the policy. Thank you. That's, that's an important question. It's something that we reviewed previously and it just, it was more, more of a headache than we could even imagine. Okay. So do we want to move to accept these two policies? Do we want to wait two weeks? What do you want to do with the two policies that we've vetted tonight? The changes that we made tonight were, were not necessarily substantial.
I would make the motion to accept the two policies as amended this evening.
Okay, can you specify those policies as the town website policy and the policy regarding receipt of email address to town of Manchester Boards and Committees?
What you just said.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll call vote. Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Mitterman, turn about, yes. Okay, great. I will email you on my town email. The final markup of these policies, we obviously will be taking out this introductory paragraph and just policies so that they can be posted into the board policy book that we're going to talk about tonight. And thank you to the public for walking through this, watching this particular aspect is like making bad sausage. Or making really good sausage, but taking the time to do it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the utility abatement request of 31 Proctor Street. And Greg, do you want to start this off?
Sure, thank you, Jeff. So this has been before you a couple of times. And so what is now before you is taking of the policy that was adopted a few years ago by the board that allows basically a property owner to request an abatement for, for a large usage based on a leak or some, some problem with the system. And then if you have one of these and every five years, then what we do is we take the three-year average of typical volume and subtract that against the, the the particular use that occurred if there was a leak or some problem. And then apply the wholesale rate, a wholesale rate to that the, the amount above that average. And so we've, we've done that in this case. Chuck used two different ways to calculate the wholesale rate. One was, was just looking at the treatment plant itself and applying the cost there on a, on a per cubic foot basis. And the second method was a little more inclusive, include, includes the cost of running the treatment plant, but it also includes the cost of the distribution system results in a slightly higher wholesale rate. And so applying that higher wholesale rate in this case would result in a, in an abatement of some $3,300 off, off of the, off of the bill as, as an amount. And that would be so to be exact, the final bill would be $4,005.59 by applying that formula as just described, as opposed to the full bill, which was And so I say a, a reduction of roughly $3,300 or more. And that would be our recommendation that you give as an abatement for this, for this account.
Any comments, questions, concerns on the board?
Only two comments. One policy did say that you guys could build the the cost basis. Personally, I lean towards using just the water treatment, but I'll leave the judgment in your hands about what appropriately deals with covering the, the costs of production. Second, just a reminder that in the future, the way the policy was supposed to work is the DPW can simply apply that formula. Tell the residents that that's what they'll do and only needs to come up to the board if the residents say no and still want it further abated.
Right, understood.
Is is the policy unclear on whether it should include the cost, the total cost of water?
Yeah, it is.
It doesn't specify.
Okay. Any other board comments?
I, I lost the thread for a moment. Are we talking about that we should recommend the cost that includes operating? Or are we, which of the two, 3,194 or 4,005? Which is the number we're looking, where we want to approve?
We're recommending the 405, the 405 number. So it's more, slightly more inclusive cost for determining the wholesale rate.
Thank you.
Are, are we able to clarify this? On the DPW website, I mean, site? So that we don't have this, this gray area? gray area.
So we can do that sort of administratively, or if, if you want to uh, formalize it even more so, you could amend the policy to, to specify that the wholesale rate is determined by the cost of, of water production at the plant and also the, the cost of maintaining the pipes to get the water to, to the correct.
I, I personally think it should be formalized in that way. It, 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 it's not, it's not subject to the interpretation that some people are given one approach and others another. I think it should be just straightforward.
Greg, wasn't there a form that was developed as part of the initial policy right up?
Yes.
Couldn't that be included on that form? So that the public were in the name, received that form to fill it out, apply for the abatement. Would be informed as part of that form with, with the cost basis was.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could basically put the formula for calculating the wholesale cost right on that form.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Jeff, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. The four thousand. I saw Chuck's calculation. I think, um, I think that the, uh, the customer is getting a, a good deal here because Chuck did base it just on the excess, the water that was wasted. I mean, the, the, the client has a historical usage that was about two thousand dollars out of the seventy three hundred. And he backed out that two thousand, yet the calculation we've got here is just going to be his final bill, which, um, I would have thought might be a few hundred dollars more, but that's okay. Um, I'm, I saw the calculation the way he did it and I'm fine with it.
Well, just, I'd like to make a comment. Chair, I'd like to make a comment before we go to the motion. And that is, um, I understand the basis for the two different calculations. But the basis is not specified in the policy. My sense of this is that for this customer that it should be charged at the lower of the two figures. And that we should amend the policy to have that level of specificity that was used to come up with the uh, four thousand five fifty nine. And that that, as Eli said, is written on an application for.
So, um, sorry.
Go ahead.
So my recollection when we did the policy was that we established as part of the policy that the formula would be established by the DPW director and the town administrator.
I understand, but go ahead.
Did I remember that correctly? And I, I think that we did that on purpose.
Wait, you did it on purpose for what?
To allow for, um, the potential for shifting, um, definitions of, of what were, where costs were appearing for water.
That may have been a good idea when this policy was, was being formulated. But I'm thinking about the interpretation of tree policy. Um, or the interpretation of what is a town tree? And that could defined by whoever was going to cut down the tree, who, whatever the DPW said. As opposed to having a very specific and clear policy that was subsequently developed with, in cooperation with the Friends of the Trees. Even having that policy, it's a challenge to administer. So I, I think this is, this is my own opinion and, uh, the board can, can go in a different direction, I'm sure. But I think that I would recommend doing, um, the cost of the water itself and not the distribution. Um, until that gets clarified, and I think that it should be part of a policy revision. That's just my concern about this. I would like to see the, the four thousand dollars char- charged as well. But I don't know whether the next time somebody comes through, how it's going to be applied because we don't have it specified in the policy. So couple of people said they wanted to make a motion. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this tonight, um, if we could hear a motion in a second and then take a vote.
Make a motion that we approve, um, the utility abatement for thirty one Proctor Street. Um, new final bill to be four thousand five dollars and fifty nine cents.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Bowling, seconded by Ms. Jakes. Any further discussion? Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling.
Yes.
Chair votes no. Okay, so that's where we are, and I would like to, uh, suggest that we calendar a policy review in the future to, uh, at a future meeting to get that language into the policy itself. And I understand the reasons why you, what you said, Eli, but I would like to have a discussion, further discussion about that issue. Okay, let's keep moving. The next item on the agenda would be
I think you have both Sue and, and Steve.
I, but that was my question. Are they both here?
I believe I saw them both.
Yes, I am here.
Okay, Steve Gang here.
I see him, I see his name.
Hi, struggling with the mute button.
Good evening. Thank, thank you, Steve, for, for breaking through that struggle. Okay, then, um, this would be a discussion of Christian Hill Conservation Restriction. And, um, Greg, I want you to go ahead and tee this one up.
The voters approved the purchase of, of Christian Hill. Um, a little while ago, back in, um, June of twenty twenty at the annual delayed annual town meeting. And, and part of that vote was to place a conservation restriction on this property to twelve acre piece in what we're calling the Western Woods near the Beverly Town Line. And, um, as part of the vote, it was agreed, as I say, to put a conservation restriction on the property. And so that has been, been negotiated with the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust as the holder of the, of the CR Conservation Restriction, um, and a lot of work has gone to crafting that restriction and there wanted to be a little more discussion before finalizing, um, the document regarding, um, the old logging road. Um, and just refresh folks' memories as part of the motion that was approved at town meeting. Um, the land was purchased for water supply protection, open space and passive recreation purposes. And I'm quoting here, including the incidental right to use widen or otherwise improve the existing logging road thereon. After consultation with the Conservation Commission for passive recreation purposes and/or pedestrian and vehicular access to other conservation or recreational land. Um, and so that phrase that I just read wants to be captured in, in the conservation, uh, restriction. And, and like I say, uh, Sue and Steve could perhaps speak a little more to this. This has been some, um, uh, going back and forth on, on the exact wording and how best to capture, uh, that, um, that, uh, desire or that, um, approval that voters gave to capture it in the, in the CR as well. So I, I, we, we can talk a little bit about it. I don't know if we want to spend a lot of time trying to get that wording exact tonight. Um, but maybe, um, one or two selectmen can work with Sue and Steve and, and maybe someone from MECT to, to finalize the, the language. Um, and then we get back to you for final approval, but it warranted coming back uh, before, before the board is selected here just to check in. And as I say, uh, Steve and Sue, they have some additional comments to make there.
So the chair recognizes Sue Brown.
I, I think you, um, teed that up pretty good, Greg. There isn't a lot to say. Um, I, there is just some language regarding the, the use of, um, motorized vehicles. I think that the Conservation Commission had some issues with how it was the language that is in there currently and as did NECT. They just wanted some clarification, mostly on maybe what was anticipated. Um, and then what's the best language to allow that anticipated? Or eventual use. So I think we're really close. I, I wanted to point out to, um, that the language that precedes the the, the various allowed uses, I think, kind of gives wholesale, um, protection to the parcel in, in that it says that, um, these are allowed uses provided that they do not harm the conservation values um, of the property, more or less. I'm speaking without having it in front of me, but, um, so I just wanted to point that out. And then it lists a bunch of uses, one of which is, um, that vehicle access. So, um, I'm, I'm going to let, um, Steve add what he wants. And I'm happy to work with folks. I do time, I would just say time is a little bit of the essence because we're trying to get the CR in, um, under the, um, format that is recent, just recently been updated by DCR, but I have spoken with them. They said we won't have to redo it in the new format as long as we can proceed hastily. So I would like to, to get agreement sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Right, if I, if I may.
Hang on one second, Steve. What's hastily, Sue, in terms of the timeline?
Well, they didn't, they didn't give a timeline, but, uh, you know, I think we, I think we're at a, I think we're, we have very little less, very little to agree on, um, that we have to resolve. So I would hope that we could do it within tonight or a week or two weeks, um, as long as we can
Okay.
craft the language that's
Okay, I just wanted to get a ballpark.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, I agree wholeheartedly with Sue. I think there is only one policy issue remaining here in the drafting of the language of the CR, and it's a relatively small policy issue in our view. Uh, so perhaps it could be disposed of tonight, but before I plunge into that for a moment, just to step back to say a great big thank you to everybody who's participated in lining this, um, parcel up for purchase and finding the funds and and, you know, we're very, very close to the finish line on this one. And it's, it's a keystone piece of the puzzle that, that is our Western Woods. So Bravo to to Sue, Greg, to various boards and commissions and, and the town as a whole. Um, the one policy issue I think that, that, uh, is still up for question here is whether the, um, right for vehicular access to the logging road will be open or whether it'll be constrained to the other specified purposes such as the town's use uh, for purposes of maintenance and other reserved rights, um, as necessary by police or government agencies carrying out their lawful duties and by individual transportation vehicles, i.e. private uh, members of the public, uh, reasonably necessary or customary for mobility of people with physical limitations or disabilities. All of those make a great deal of sense. Then each one suggests a relatively small amount of, of usage by motorized vehicles. However, if we say that the the right is also reserved in the CR for to drive on the logging road, um, whether or not we improve the road. I think we're, we're opening the gates very, very widely. And that's what concerns, uh, Conservation Commission in terms of advice to you folks. And I think it's also what concerns MECT, although they may want to speak for themselves. Happy to answer any questions, uh, but as I said, I, I think it boils down to the question of whether it's those specified basically, uh, town and public and, uh, governmental fire prevention, police uses, or do we add the public to that?
If I may, Jeff.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, my, my concern with this, and I remember when this first came up and that, that sentence was concerning to me. However, this is something that, um, the townspeople have voted on. And if we put restrictions on that or amend it or qualify it, is that something that needs to go back to the voters? Greg, is that for you? I'm not sure.
Well, so the, the, the balancing act, so you, you need to decide whether or not what you're proposing is consistent with the language that the vote is approved. So, um, if you, if you feel like the ultimate language you would like to have is not consistent with the language, then you would need to go back to the voters. I, I don't recommend that we go down that path. Um, I think we should strive to craft language that you feel is consistent with, with the vote.
I feel that, um, given that it was approved by the townspeople to be uh, a conservation area with conservation restriction, I think that, um, we can be confident that we could keep within the the intent of what was voted.
So I think, if, if I may, um, my memory is that one of the, you know, sort of, um, scenarios that was speculated on was that, say, additional land are acquired further in to the woods, if you will. And, and in order to get to that additional parcel, you needed to pass through this, the Christian Hill piece. Um, and if that additional parcel was a, um, you know, say it's a, say it's a, it's a multi-purpose ball field. Then I, then I think this language would allow you know, vehicular access to other conservation or recreational land. This taking the words from, from the vote. So that could only be done after consultation with the Conservation Commission. They would be to to basically sign off on that concept. But I, but I think the vote would allow such a scenario. And and so I don't think it's a blanket. You can have any, you can have, uh, a, a road open to any vehicles just for any purpose. But I think if you constructed uh, interior to Christian Hill, uh, uh, an amenity that was for conservation purposes or recreational purposes, and you wanted people to have vehicular access to it. I, I think this language would allow that after careful consultation and review and, and improper measures taken to protect, as Sue indicated, sort of the, the improper measures taken to protect, as Sue indicated, sort of the the broad purposes of why this was purchased.
Thank you. Jeff.
Go ahead.
I was gonna raise the the analogy of similar situation in the Wilderness Conservation Area where the old school street is open to passage. Typically, just by one landowner who transits supat back and forth from his his site. And that I mean, obviously, it's not without risk. And there was noticeable oil or hydraulic fluid spill last November that concerned us greatly because it happened actually in the wetland resource. The road itself is part of the marsh. Just a little, a little raised area. Similarly, road, logging road, transits right alongside a wetland, a fairly pretty one, actually. So the the odds that we would simply want to widen it and let people drive on it, even if it was to get to a you know, a multi-purpose recreation facility, we would probably as a town, want to find another route in there, say, from crooked land that didn't impinge as as this one probably does. That makes sense?
Yes, but there is the issue of the intent of the language as it was voted on. Sue, you had something that you wanted to say.
I was just going to say, if we clarified in the section entitled logging the section entitled motor vehicles. The last, the D that most, that is most concerning says that the use of motor vehicles by grant or a member of the public's on the logging road is an allowed use. So I think because it it doesn't specify for what. That's the rub. So I'm wondering if we simply insert language that says for what purpose, which would be language similar to what was in the warrant, if that would be suspicious. I think, I mean, honestly, I I don't think at this point there is an intent to create other uses within there. And if we're successful in moving forward with the preservation effort, it would in fact maybe all be protected through chapter 97, in which case motor vehicles aren't allowed. So I think if we, I wonder if that language specifying for what use motorized vehicles could be used, I wonder if that would help. I offer that to to Steve.
Yeah, that seemed, as I understand it, that works with me and I assumed would work with the intent of the Article 14 from last year, as as worded. It does not say public access. It doesn't say government access. It just says access. So I think it's up to up to you folks and the define the limits on that.
So if everyone knows where Sue is, so she's in, you know, it's section B, item number 12, I believe, which has motorized, motor vehicles. And then the last, the last element of that, the D, and really that last sentence. If we inserted additional language there that mimics the language of the vote, then we're probably achieving what 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 we need to achieve here. And I agree with Sue that I don't, I don't, I don't see, you know, a big new sports complex of fields going out in this area by any means. It's just the train would would be, would just not be conducive for that. So I think if we put that language in here, I think that may provide some assurances to folks that we are talking about a narrow window of what would constitute proper vehicular access.
So Greg, what, how much of the language of the warrant article would you put into clause D?
Yeah, basically, that when I started to read that at the beginning. So well, so it's vehicle for for access to passive recreational purposes. So maybe we can shorten it a little bit. We just say or back and forth here. In essence, it would be motorized vehicle access only for the purposes of promoting access to other conservation or recreational lands. But it's still subject to consultation with the Conservation Commission and what to be done under the strictest environmental guidelines and and standards.
I think there are multiple safety nets in the language that's there and in the intent of the CR. So I think if parties agree, we could ask the, ask town council to craft that final language and present it to MECT and the and the Conservation Commission. Acceptance.
Let's try that.
Oh, I see. I think that might be Patrice with her hand up, says Manchester Essex Conservation.
Jeff.
Yes, thank, thank you, Sue.
I I can't count on you, but I'm asking Jeff to. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Patrice Murphy. I'm the executive director and I'm the one that did a review and flag this for Sue to bring both to Conservation Commission and to the select board here. Ordinarily, if I came across what seemed to be almost opposing languages, I would say, hey, let's just cut this road out of the conservation restriction so that you can do whatever you intended with the road and let people drive through and the land on either side would be preserved. But I don't think the town can do that since you use CPA funds. You have to put a conservation restriction on the entire parcel. And so I think this might come down to, I'd like to see what your town council recommends. But this may get pushed back by the state review process also.
So, Patrice, I don't know if it's fair to ask, but would would you feel comfortable with with the modifications that we just discussed? Do you need to think about it or?
Well, allowing people to pass through to recreation land on the other side, that that could be 50 to 150 cars in a weekend. That's that's pretty significant on conservation land, whether it gets paved or not. But the town vote is a significant piece here. And the town vote comes before, it precedes the conservation restriction. So right now, we have to go either with the town vote language or or go back to town vote, I believe. I I I'm interested in hearing what the state's going to say, whether we can, whether we can have it both ways here.
So we give it a try with town councils legal eye and maybe we go from there.
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead, Dylan.
Yeah, I I do support that. Part of the intent here was to leave some flexibility for the town to be able to develop is not the correct word. However, we're engaged in building a forest for a stewardship plan for that area. And we have been envisioning this notion that the Western Woods and other areas could be connected as a chain of parcels that should be available for people to use for passive recreation. And I'm concerned that we have a tendency to create these resources, but without really addressing the ability of the public to get to and use these resources. So I think that no, I'm certainly not looking to drive a paved road through there. I'm looking to preserve the ability against in the future as we try to connect these roads, how we maintain or connect, how do we connect these parcels for passive use? How we are able to maintain them and provide access to them? And whether or not it's motorized vehicles or bikes or e-bikes. I don't have a particular opinion. But I do care about the access. I think it's important.
Other board members? Okay, the chair recognizes Christina Tullisio.
Thank you. I would just had a quick suggestion. I've actually become familiar with the Chibaco Woods Land Management Plan. And my suggestion was just to take a look at that. There's some language in there that might be useful. And it clearly defines that, you know, town vehicles for maintenance purposes can be used, but that limits the maintenance the portion of that and that it is restricted to passive recreation. But it clearly defines, you know, who can go on that for maintenance. That's just throwing that out there. We already have that conservation restriction. It's part of it. Just throwing that up there as a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. So the next step would be to actually craft the language. I'm hearing two different strains here. One is let's limit this, lock it down as much as possible. And the second is the intent of the article is to be able to reach other parcels for passive recreation, for the public to do so. Whatever language is to be vetted by town council is gonna try and thread the needle between those two things. Is that what I'm hearing?
In essence, yes, I think so.
Okay. If I may, I
Go ahead, Steve.
I I'm just concerned that adopting, using, reusing the language from the article postpones the decision on a relatively important element of policy. And even if we were, you have a a destination recreation facility in the middle of Western Woods, which, as as everybody said, is hard to imagine, even if that happened. I think any of us would imagine dozens or hundreds of cars going in there to a large parking area. Has to be some other kind of solution if we want to provide motorized access. Town shuttle bus, some kind of thing like that, if if push came to shove. But if we don't make the decision about whether this is open to members of the public to drive their private vehicles, we're going to face it later.
Jeff.
Just a minute, Mary.
No, this is Sue.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sue.
So I just wanted to direct you to the beginning of B. And it says that the grantor reserves the right to conduct or permit the following activities and uses on the premises, but only if such uses and activities do not materially impair conservation values or purposes of this conservation restriction. So this is the language that I think would prohibit, actually, you know, a full-on road going to another thing. I think that provides the protection that folks are looking for. And I do agree with Patrice. I think, you know, the state will, the state will weigh in. But I I think the intent here is right that, you know, that that we keep access through there, but that it's not, it really isn't intended to be an open right for any and all access for any purposes. So
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm likely wrong. But correct me if I'm wrong, that A6 doesn't contradict everything that was in E12.
I don't believe it contradicts it.
A6 says the use, and I'm gonna edit it a little bit here, of vehicles. And it gives a lot of inclusions, but it ends with any other motorized vehicle on the premises except for vehicles necessary for public safety in their, carrying out their official duties or is it necessary for the mobility impaired is prohibited. Period.
Correct.
So that restricts public access with a motorized vehicle to the mobile, mobility impaired. Now, I haven't walked this logging road yet. I won't say that I've ridden it on my bike. I won't say that. But when I think about the Old Essex Road and anybody with mobility impairment trying to go along the Old Essex Road, the length of the Old Essex Road out to Andrew Street in Essex, that's never gonna happen. It's just the grades are too steep, the the ruts are too many. The boulders or rocks are too few, are too many. So I I'm not trying to ramble here or go way off the off the farm. I'm I'm trying to understand how A6 doesn't trump B12. And limit it specifically to the mobility impaired. And then whether we have to I don't know, grade it and other things to allow access for the mobility impaired. Which is an OSRP question. So I know you wanted to come in here and just help with a little bit of tweaking on the language. But I'm tossing this back to you because when I read this earlier today, I said, how does this happen? That we have A6 and B12 in the same dark? And please enlighten me on my ignorance. I'm happy to have that happen. I saw your head shake, Steve.
It's a great question.
So are you shaking your head too, or can you help me out, please?
I don't know if I don't
You don't understand this? It's pretty straightforward. Come on.
I don't, I don't know if I can help you out of saying which one trumps which. I can only I don't know if I can help you out of saying which one trumps which I can only speak to the intent of it. And if you look at the intent of the first, you know, one through four on that B twelve. Of B. It's, it's, you know, it's obvious to me that what they're talking about is. Particular uses for, you know, safety, maintenance. And so and so on, and. And I don't think that I don't think that it was ever the intent to say. That we're opening this up to the members of the public for any particular purpose. So I don't know how the language gets tweaked so that they are compatible. Because one is a prohibition and the other is an allowance. But I think if we can all agree on what the intent is. That that that's the best that we can do and then give it to the state and see if they agree with. The acceptability of it. And again, I do think the language that says, you know, you can only do this if. If you're not compromising the. The conservation values of the property. Give some protection. So even if we came up with a reason for, you know, creating a road and allowing more access at the very. You still have to pass the bar. Does it materially impair the conservation values or purpose of the conservation restriction? And if it does, then I think it's not allowed.
And that's the language you want to insert.
That's the language that's already in there. At the very beginning of B, I have the language that I would suggest we put in in terms of. The twelve is simply that it's for conservation purposes. But I think, such as the warrant language stated, but I think the. The overarching reserved rights and exception clause at the very beginning. Protects us from doing anything that will materially impair the conservation values. Again, I'm going with the intent and leaving it to others to to figure out how they can be compatible, but I do think it's. Possible. I'm an optimist.
Okay. Then this is my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, whenever you shake your head, you should point over towards Sue and her screen. Yes. Okay. So what we need at this point. Is a board member. Sue, Greg and Michelle and Steve to put their heads together.
I'm happy to facilitate that. That gathering or conservation. And I'm happy to invite Patrice as well.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to exclude the truth.
That's okay.
Well.
Eli?
Yeah, I know I. Worked with the original group trying to pull this together in the first place. I'd be willing to go back and. Follow it through.
Okay. Any other board members want to wrestle that one away from Eli? All right. So. I'd like to get a motion that that's what we do. And I could state the motion if you want.
Yeah, would you please?
The. The Board of Selectmen. Requests that the town planner. Chair of the Conservation Commission. Is Patrice the Chair of Met?
Director.
Executive Director.
Executive Director of Met. Eli Bowling. From the Board of Selectmen. The town administrator. In consultation with town council. Clarify the language. In the conservation.
Restriction.
Restriction. And bring it back before. The board. On November fourth. Oh, excuse me, October.
For Christian Hill.
Excuse me, but for Christian Hill, thank you, Becky. And bring it back before the board on October fourth. If the language is not finalized by then. That they come back and report progress.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Ms. Harrison. I'm calling for.
Oh, sorry.
I'm calling for the vote now.
Good. I I don't have an opinion. I. Yes.
Mr. Rapp, sorry.
I have an opinion. It's yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, I'm sorry that it took so long to get to where you wanted to get to. But I think that the. The nuances of the language were really important and highlighting. The intent of introductory sentence and B. Who's very important to the chair. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, can I make a proposal?
Please do.
May already be thinking about this, but I see you're going to suggest the BOBOS policies review to later in the meeting or out of the meeting. And allow us to move to the fall meeting, to town meeting discussion.
That's prerogative of the chair?
Yes, it is.
Such power. I would suggest that we move that to our meeting on November fourth. It's not a pressing issue and. It is something that we need to work on so that we have really clear access to the policies. When we're when we're acting on things. So. Is there any objection from any member of the board to doing that?
November fourth or October fourth?
Excuse me, October fourth. I keep, I keep looking at my calendar and thinking it's going to be November because then we have time to.
I can't go there yet.
I I I would like to see a copy of the policies before we discuss them.
Okay. See as in a digital copy.
Preferably not mounted in a frame, so I can't touch it. But yeah, yes, I mean, an electric electronic copy.
Yes. Well, I mean, you could be handed a policy book. That was all printed out. Sonya was ready to do that. But I think that we need, I think we need to have it in digital form.
I would like to be able to search things and. Note, yes, I would much prefer. Electronic version. Thank you. But I would like it maybe a week before the next meeting.
Sure. Is that possible, Greg?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay. Any other board comments on that decision? Okay, that's not going to be voted on. The chair. Is moving the OS policies review to our October fourth meeting. Fall town meeting. I don't know whether Greg or Alan wants to set this one up.
I'm happy to defer to Alan, but I'm also happy to jump in if he would prefer.
Alan, who would you like to defer to?
I I'd like to defer to Greg. I think I think there's some basic information that that he can outline probably better than I.
Then let's do that. Greg, go ahead.
So before diving into specific articles. I think it's worth a bit of a pause to talk about. How best to have us fall town meeting if indeed we proceed to have a fall town meeting. You know, in in hindsight, which is always twenty twenty, well, not always, but in this case, perhaps it is. I I. I wish we had pushed harder for an earlier date. In order to be outdoors without a lot of additional. Challenges in terms of tents and heat and lights and and all of that. Good stuff that we may well need if we're in November. But of course, we didn't know that the. Where the pandemic was going to go and the Delta variant and. And given where we are with with. With Delta, despite the town's continued good showing in terms of vaccination rates and. And people being good about wearing masks, it's not a hundred percent. And indeed, even with with vaccinated. With the vaccine vaccine in you, you can still catch catch Delta. And so meeting indoors for an extended period of time. Even with some social distancing and with masks. Just doesn't seem like a good idea at this at this point in time. So that really points to. Either holding it outdoors or deferring it completely. Deferring it completely has has problems because there are some pressing issues that. Both the public and you as a board and other boards are very anxious for the town to address. So if that's the case, which is a strong argument for that. We can proceed with with what will be an outdoor event. I don't see us being able to do it much earlier than than the thirteenth of November. You might be able to move it up a week, but it's it's. It's all a little difficult in terms of that timing. And to do it outdoors in mid-November, I think we need to be prepared for the weather, which which means it could be quite chilly. And we should have a tent. We should try to get heat in that tent. And. My hesitancy has been because of the dollars. It's it's probably be a pretty expensive event to to pull off. Tents themselves could be tens of thousands of dollars. Getting heat and light in them. You know, we could be in the fifty thousand dollar range for for cost. The good news is that that would be. Legitimate cost to use our federal Arclan money, the American Recovery Act. Dollars that we have received and will 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 receive. We've received the first installment of those dollars. So we do have the dollars that we can spend. Obviously, there are other. Pressing needs that those dollars could be used. Used towards as well. But nonetheless. Continuing. To conduct the business of the town through the voters is is a is a priority. And so. It was certainly you can justify spending those dollars for them. So that's a long way to say we. We can proceed with a November meeting, probably best to do it outdoors, given. Given what we know about COVID, at least today, where we are in another six weeks, eight weeks. Is anyone's guess. Try to predict that for sure. But to be on the safe side, it doesn't seem like we're going to be a whole lot better than where we are today. And therefore, an indoor meeting, you know, for four hours or so. Conducting the business of the town doesn't seem like the most prudent thing to do. So again, I think that leads us to saying recommending that we we try to work as best we can. On a Saturday afternoon on the football field. At the high school, at the middle high school. And that we proceed with getting the. Equipment that we need to make that as comfortable as possible, being the tent and probably some heaters and potentially some lights as well. And that if you're okay using the dollars that I talked about in that range, we don't have a final figure yet. We're still waiting to hear quotes. From different vendors, but it could well be in that that fifty thousand dollar range of an expense. So I wanted the board an opportunity to discuss. Discuss this before we get into the details of the warrant. There are a couple of additional. More articles that's going against our desire to keep the meeting as short as possible. So that we don't have people. Gathered for me. For longer periods than we absolutely have to. But there are a couple of other items that would be helpful to to add to the agenda. So we need to talk about the warrant itself, but before that, I think it's worth taking a pause and making sure everyone is comfortable with with the direction. Of going outdoors and the dollars that we're talking about. So Alan, I welcome your fine tuning of those comments.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Chairman. I'll start by saying the obvious, which I I am sure is that for all of us, the first priority is protecting. The health and safety of our voters. And we looked, Greg and Diane and I looked at the space in the Memorial School today, which. Were it not for the Delta variant and COVID, would probably have been more than adequate for the number of people we expect. But but given the need for some social distancing. It's it's probably not adequate to at least get the optimal amount of social distancing. It is also likely, and and there are other problems because the construction at Memorial is not finished. So the most likely indoor venue is probably at the middle high school. Using a combination of the auditorium and the cafeteria. That will probably work. It won't give us as much social distancing as I think we would like. And a couple of facts that I think are. Beyond dispute. One, even though we have a relatively high vaccination rate in town. I think it's inevitable that some people will come to the meeting who are not vaccinated. The ability to require masks. Of all people in a in a situation where people are voting is not entirely clear. And it's also true, I think, that by November. The effectiveness of at least some of the vaccines for people who are not qualified for boosters will have been waning for some months. It also is, it also appears that we're looking at a pretty long meeting. Jeff had estimated maybe three hours. I think that's probably about right, and that was before. We knew that there would be a couple more articles on the warrant, which will probably get extended discussion. So I think we're. We're looking at a pretty long meeting. If we are in multiple rooms indoors, the time to coordinate between the two rooms just compounds the duration issue. So I I. I've come to the conclusion that outdoors is by far preferable despite the expense. I spoke with Jeff earlier this afternoon and I. You know, I I think there's a pretty good case to be made for deferring it entirely, not only the cost, but. Because the conditions are likely to have improved. Fact is, though, that with. SLV having received its. Letter of eligibility. I think if we if we made a decision to defer the meeting until the spring, we would probably receive a petition with two hundred signatures to hold a special town meeting anyway. And given that's the the reality, I don't think deferring to the spring is a prudent option. We might as well plan for the fall and do it right.
Greg, could you clarify? Whether we would only be able to. Apply the ARPA funds to this. Or whether we could use. Reserve funds since it's a one-time expense.
Well, you you could. That would take a another article. Well, you, you could. That would take a, another article at, at the town meeting to approve using town funds. We would need additional funds. We don't have enough in the current budget. So that, that could be an additional article to request voter approval. It didn't, it wouldn't have to be at this meeting. You could, you could actually do it at the annual town meeting. But nonetheless, you would need voter approval for that.
Okay. Any questions from the board to what Greg and Alan have been reviewing?
I have a question, Jeff. So it, it, it sounds, the indoor venue is, is a struggle because there's just not enough room, even using the two largest spaces in the high school, the middle high school. Did you explore the possibility of having three venues and also having something perhaps on the football field, but smaller? So that those who want to be outside can be outside and those who feel more comfortable inside, depending upon their situation. And so you might have three venues. It sounds like it's going to be complex no matter what the situation is. But a smaller venue outside for those who want to do it might be more manageable.
So that is, that is a possibility. Yeah, so that is a possibility. We, we didn't, we haven't specifically talked about that. And just to keep going with options that you, 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 you could pursue a larger indoor space in another community, an adjacent community, you know, so could is the fieldhouse in Gloucester available? You know, we got to find out. That's certainly a very large space. You could put, I'm sure you could put 400 people socially distanced in that fieldhouse.
Alan, is that possible to move the meeting outside of the boundaries of Manchester by the city?
It, it is. It's a little bit complicated. I've discussed that with town council. Chapter 39, section 10A, which is the statute under which I postponed the meeting in 2020. If I exercise my authority under that to postpone it, the town, the, the selectman can then move the location to a spot within a contiguous town. Town council's opinion is that I first have to exercise the, the continuance authority under that statute, and that opens the door to moving it.
And that's not part of the emergency declaration?
It, well, that's, that's a different issue. First of all, town council doesn't believe that the governor's emergency declaration is a prerequisite to my exercising that authority because that same statute allows for me to, to continue a meeting in the event of a, of a weather event. And it wouldn't necessarily be a governor's declaration. In fact, when the governor lifted most of the COVID restrictions on May 28th, he issued a second declaration, which states that the emergency is continuing. And that declaration is still in effect. That one, that one didn't get anywhere nearly as much press.
No, it didn't. My own sense is that moving the meeting out of town is a non-starter. I think that the residents of the town would truly object to that. I, I, I could not make a recommendation that we move in that direction. But I'm only one member of this board. So I would have to hear from other board members in regard to moving the meeting.
If I may.
You may.
I'm concerned that if we have the meeting outdoors, we will many active members of the community will not be, be able or willing to be there sitting for four hours in 30, 40 degree weather is I can just feel my toes freezing off. And yeah, I, I think, I think the effect on, on the attendance of, of the discomfort outweighs the question of having to go out of town. Most everybody drives to the meeting anyway. Driving to the Gloucester Field House is, it's a little further, but I'm sure there's parking. And, and I, in order to keep the tent warm, we'd have to put down sides, which would reduce the air circulation and work against the separation and I just, it sounds horrible. Sorry. That's my opinion.
Other board members?
Jeff, if I may.
Becky?
Greg, you were, you were talking about this. And what would be, you said the earliest we could have the meeting would possibly meet, move it up one week in November. Is that correct?
So it's a, it's a, it's a little unclear. So, so a special town meeting requires two weeks of the warrant being, being posted two weeks prior. But then it also says that, you know, voters have the right to have petition articles and they need to get those petition articles in 28 days prior, prior to the town meeting. So if you set the date tonight, you know, it, it would need to be, you know, 30 days out to give people at least a week to get any final petition articles. We, we've been saying, you know, mid-November, so we've been talking mid-October as the deadline for petition. But even though it doesn't explicitly say it in our bylaw, that you have to allow those, you know, 28 plus days, you know, it just says that, that all articles, you know, that aren't being generated by you as the selectman, they need to be in by 28 days. But it seems logical to give people, you know, fair warning, you know, when the deadline is.
Absolutely.
You know, so if you wanted to, so, so you could set, okay, so you could set tonight, you know, 30 days from now. So that would be October 20th. That's, you know, three weeks, four weeks, you know, two, three, three plus weeks ahead of where we currently are talking. You know, that, that could help. It might make those toes a little less frozen. You know, the, you know, the last week of October is, is, you know, odds are going to be a little better than the, than the second, sorry, the second week of November.
Right. I would, it, it would be nice if we could move it up, but I wouldn't want it to be done in such a way that, that there was a perception that we were doing it for any reason other than trying to keep everybody a little bit more comfortable.
So it'll, it'll likely preclude some of the zoning amendment articles because the planning board really is, is not ready yet.
No, there's, yes. Yeah.
You know, so they, I think they're scheduling their public hearings in, in the end of October at this point.
They're working very hard to get all that. Yeah. And I think that wouldn't be fair to, I wouldn't want to kneecap them. That would not be fair.
And again, this sort of spills over into what articles are actually going to be on the warrant. If we're trying to minimize the number of articles, we may not want to do some of these zoning amendments anyways. So that's, this is an involved discussion all around.
Well, given that, I, I would agree with Ann. I think that people would be much happier doing a little bit more of a drive than, and I agree, my toes were starting to curl up when we were talking about that, same as Ann's. So, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Jeff.
We have been talking about doing this as a daytime meeting on a weekend.
Yes. We're, we're looking at, the alternative date was Saturday, the 13th of November.
So the date that you're saying would be the earliest date, Greg, would be if it were a weekend date, would be the 30th or the 23rd of October?
Those, those are states for the Saturday, so yes. Just getting my calendar open here.
The 23rd doesn't work because that's not 28. Yes, it is. So if we're set it for the 23rd in the afternoon, the four weeks and the two weeks are consecutive or overlapping?
Overlapping.
We wouldn't be able to have the warrant out to the public if a petition article came in within the 28-day framework. We wouldn't have the, if it came in, say, on
So, so petition
Was the 22nd. That's 28 days.
Right. So if you, if you said 23rd, October 23rd is going to be the, the special town meeting.
Correct.
Petition articles would, would need to be in our, well, so the weekend, so probably this Friday, the 24th. This coming Friday would be the deadline for receipt of any petition articles.
Excuse me, Jeff?
But if we do it on the 23rd, just for a second, Becky, if I may, if we do it on the 23rd, I, I, I think that precludes some of the zoning amendments because I believe the planning board is scheduled for the 25th to hold their hearing. If not.
So then we're looking at the 30th.
Right. So now we're two weeks ahead of the 13th and and again, this is all presuming you, you agree that you want it outside.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Are the 28 days, are those calendar days or business days?
Calendar days.
Just to be clear.
Calendar, calendar days.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Good question. I checked with town council this afternoon.
I don't think we could have it on the 23rd. I think that that's handicapping any citizen petition articles by moving the date up that far. So if we're going to do it on a weekend day, it would have to be the 30th. If we're going to do it on a weekend day. Alan, what are the logistics of John's suggestion of high school, middle school, auditorium, cafeteria and an outdoor platform?
Well, two rooms are a mess. Two rooms and outdoors on the football field will be a multiple mess. I don't know what, I don't know what the, the video, I mean, the audio capability is to do that. Or whether it's even possible.
So the decision
That's, that's a legal requirement. People in all the spaces have to be able to speak and to hear each other.
So the decision really comes down to do we use, there's three decisions or three options? Do we use the high school, middle school and the cafeteria? That's option number one. Do we work outside completely? That's option number two. And option number three is to remove to a venue outside of the town.
I guess, I guess option number four, although there, there is the problem that I mentioned, option number four is to postpone everything until the spring.
No, we postponed, we postponed the articles that were the original basis of this special town meeting to the fall when we were planning for the annual town meeting. And my concern is we have no clue where we're going to be with COVID in the spring. And we may end up with a five or six-hour meeting over several nights in the spring.
You know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily arguing for it, Jeff. I'm just saying it's
There's an option. I understand. I just and there's so many articles that are on this that are time-sensitive.
Well, are there?
I believe the town, Hamilton would think so.
I, I know that, but are there others?
I think
Certainly that
Go ahead.
The citizens petitions, I think we can't postpone.
You, you, if you don't have a meeting, you don't have to entertain them.
Sorry. Yes. Someone had asked about if we decided to postpone that there would be a citizen's petition to hold. What, is that actually some, a something or is that just?
Well, I, I mentioned that and I, I say that because I learned this afternoon that SLV has received its letter of eligibility from the state. And I suspect that the folks who have already petitioned for zoning amendments that are related to SLV will not want to postpone consideration and will probably petition for a special town meeting and will probably get the requisite 200 signatures. Now, Greg, do you want to speak to the issue of whether zoning amendments adopted in November would be timely to do anything about SLV?
I, I can address that, sure. You know, so the, the, the deadline really is when does SLV apply for the comprehensive permit? My assumption is that they are, they will be ready to do that fairly quickly. Certainly before a town meeting in, in any potential zoning amendments being adopted. So that those new zoning amendments would not apply, assuming that SLV has applied for the comprehensive permit before the ZDA prior to the adoption of any new zoning. So it's So it's most likely that that those new zoning proposed zoning bylaws would not apply to to SLV.
It it occurs to me, though, that 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 whole scenario affects a decision by the selectman to move the meeting earlier. Because we can, we can only take up those amendment zoning amendments that SO that that SEMA has proposed if the planning board has held their hearing.
Correct.
So I think that may, I I think that may make it practically impossible to move the meeting earlier.
So let me just double check. I know that they were debating whether they were having their hearing on the the 25th of October or I think I think it was the 25th of October, but let me see if I can find that email quickly. I don't know if any, is Sue still with us? Or any of the planning board members that they know?
Mary Foley's here.
The original schedule had it on October 25th.
So then October 30th, so so October 30th would work.
But what you're saying is that once SLV applies for their special permit, then any further zoning articles, citizens petition or zoning articles emanating from the planning board that applied to that project would be not applicable.
That that's correct. But but again, 40Bs don't have to follow zoning at all. So they're they're already exempt from your zoning regulations in a sense that they I think you know, some folks were hoping that that new zoning articles would would help on appeal to potential appeal before the HAC, however appeals commission at the state level. Again, there there no requirement. It just it bolsters potential arguments.
Okay. Well, then we need to make a a decision tonight about which of the four options that we want to take.
That would be helpful. Yes.
Like to hear from the board.
I'd like to see if we can move it to the Fieldhouse in Gloucester, or if there's some facility at at Gordon College that could hold us.
I think I'd probably support that at this point. The logistics on this are beginning to sound super sketchy.
And Jeff, I I think I would as well. The outdoor situation is just it's too risky. If it's 40 degrees, you're going to get 100 people. No, you're going to get 50 people. If it's 60 or 65, you you might do better, but it's such, you know, the the temperatures are so variable, it's it's outdoor is just so risky. And I don't care how many heaters you bring in and how many roofs you've got or tent ceilings. If it's 40 or 45 degrees, people aren't going to come. So I really think that you need to focus on inside options where you have a better control. And yeah, Gordon College is an idea, and it's in fact closer. If that's possible.
I would agree. I think we need to try for indoor.
So if we're going indoors, are we then doing an evening meeting? Or are we planning on doing a weekend meeting during the daytime?
May I suggest?
Go ahead.
What I was going to say is at the convenience of the host.
Right. That's what I was going to say. Same thing.
But what's our preference?
Well, I think I think given what we like, unless unless the selectmen decide to shorten the warrant from the what I've seen, it's going to be a very long meeting. Which means if we do it in the evening, it's going to be probably two nights. I think we would be better off to try and do it. And we'd have got better attendance if we tried to do it in one session.
Meaning an afternoon session on a weekend day.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, you may.
I I would agree, but I also, we might have difficulty securing the Gloucester Fieldhouse for a weekend that and possibly even whatever's going, a facility at Gordon.
We can't. Yeah, okay. So we've got Gordon, we've got Gloucester Fieldhouse. Are there any other large facilities?
Something at Endicott, perhaps?
Or Beverly High School?
Yeah, Beverly High School.
There's a nice new police fire station in Essex.
See, you know, I don't want to put my eggs into the Gloucester Fieldhouse because we may run into, it's an open space. And when Alan puts it into his calculator, it says we only have room for 250 people. I mean, we need the biggest space that we can get. And obviously, we're going to look at all the options that are available. Are we looking at the 23rd of October or the 30th of October? And I understand, Becky, that we're talking if we're using athletic facilities, that we're going to run into all kinds of issues.
If we're if we're going inside. You could, you could, yeah, you go back to November. There's no need to rush it.
Yeah, but that's still does doesn't necessarily mean. It doesn't necessarily mean we won't have problems with people's attendance.
Schedule, well, scheduling. What what's.
We're going to need a date, and we're going to need a backup date. So do we try for something as, I mean, by the planning board's schedule, we wouldn't want to go any earlier than the 30th of October.
Correct.
So should we try for the 30th of October and then?
Any Saturday up before Thanksgiving.
And can we put a Sunday afternoon in the mix also? I'm just worried about athletic events and things on a Saturday.
Can this happen on a Sunday, Alan?
Yeah.
As far as I know.
Facilities might be more available on that day.
Yeah, you know, if if we weren't, if we weren't having to deal with the possibility of a petition for a special town meeting, would that change the calculus?
In terms of doing everything in the spring?
Yes.
Not necessarily. I I mean, there are some things that that need, like the Hamilton land swap. There are some things that are kind of ducks in a row.
But I know about that. I know the Hamilton land swap, but what else is there that's really time sensitive?
The design work, approval for money for the design work for the practice field at the burn dump site. Because if that design work is done, we would then be able to vote on the design and the monies necessary to modify that field at the annual time meeting. And that could be done, the construction could be done over the course of the summer.
And how pressing is that project?
That's pretty pressing.
I'm sorry, I don't, why is that project pressing? Yes, they have to have that field before they start work on Sweeney, but.
Because they have to have that field before they start work on Sweeney. And if you delay it another year, you're going to have a lot of parents that are going to be very upset. Because a lot of parents are already asking me, why aren't you guys doing something about Sweeney? And this is the first, this is the first duck in that row.
But we don't have the engineering plans for Sweeney. Correct. And we could do those in parallel. Since one of them is a big project and one of them is a smaller project.
What what was behind my thinking in asking that question is before you make a decision, conceivably, we could have a conversation with the SEMA folks in light of the current facts and see whether or not if you decided to postpone until the spring, they would in fact bring a petition for a special.
And didn't we receive something, we we received something from the Affordable Housing Trust, did we not?
Yes.
That I think is felt to be pretty important.
Yes. Although it's a non-binding.
Non-binding, but very important nonetheless.
Yes.
It was necessary, they felt it was necessary for them in order to be able to move forward with any requests for proposals, so that we could actually.
Right.
Proceed.
Jeff? Sue Sue Thorne, in answer to Alan's question, I would be happy to contact the SEMA board members and see if I could get a sense of the desire or the the push for a special town meeting were you guys to decide not to go forward with a fall town meeting? If that would be any help.
In terms of the timeliness of what we're we're trying to decide, I don't want to leave that in the hands of SEMA.
No, I was simply responding to.
No, I understand. I understand what you're responding to. So and I appreciate, I thank you for, I thank you for that suggestion. But this is in the light of trying to move everything into the spring.
Yeah, that's right.
And the SEMA board doesn't necessarily speak to all the people who may want to
Correct.
Have pushed to have a
Yep.
Special Town Meeting anyway.
Okay. I don't think that they would think of it on their own unless it was initiated by the board, but maybe that's an incorrect assumption.
I would say that that was there's a lot of lot of people who
Yeah.
I have different opinions about what should be happening in the town right now. And I'm 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 really concerned about leaving the decision about when we have a town meeting to the possible action of a citizen's petition for a town meeting.
Okay.
A special town meeting this fall.
All right, thank you.
I'm very concerned about leaving that decision open to
Yeah.
A citizen's petition to do a town meeting.
Okay.
And I understand your concern, Dylan, a lot, I'm I'm struggling with this. I but I I really am very concerned about the timeliness of certain articles and and the fact that we may end up with a town meeting, a fall town meeting anyway.
Well, that's why I asked the question. Because if it were clear that we were not going to end up with a fall town meeting anyway, that might change the decision.
I think that that would require more than just the SEMA board signing off on it.
I mean, I think I think you can see where I'm headed. I'm I'm concerned that the logistics of this meeting are going to turn it into a nightmare.
I think that the board could could vote to explore the options of having the meeting out of town with, you know, the facility large enough to accommodate the residents that we believe are going to be attending. So a number of 300 or so. Since the earliest that we would want to do something like this would be perhaps the first week in November. I don't think that we're, you know, I mean, if we're going to be doing it indoors, as you said, we we don't necessarily have to move up from November 13th.
Right.
That gives us until our next meeting to finalize the date.
Yeah. One one thing I would encourage you to do is plan for enough people that the chance of not having enough capacity is zero. Because if you if you plan for a number and we exceed it, I'm obligated by state law to adjourn the meeting. And it would be a real mess to gather a lot of people together and have all of you and the planning board and others do a lot of preparation, only to have me do what I would have to do, which is to adjourn the meeting to another date.
We can't predict with any certainty how many people will be at this meeting.
Right. So I think prudent suggests picking a number that we think we will not reach. We we I just want to, we had 275 for the annual town meeting this past June, almost that many for the prior annual town meeting. I I think that 300 is not enough.
When when was the last time that we that we went to special town meeting?
2019, I think.
Do we have any numbers for that?
I I have them. I don't have them at hand.
Okay.
Those are unusual. The previous special town meetings that we've had have typically not had a sleep remotely like this one.
I I'm not suggesting 300, Alan.
Okay.
But whatever number we choose. Maybe Boston Gardens, I mean. Well, you know, I mean, whatever number we choose. We could, we could exceed that capacity if enough new articles came in between now and the time of that town meeting. My concern is that we gather together in a space that's big enough for the people who want to attend. And we have to go to a second day. That's that's my nightmare. That's why I hesitate to do it on a Sunday. Rather than to try and contract with the facility for Sunday, Monday, excuse me, a Saturday, Sunday. Maybe what we could do is a Sunday, Monday, I don't know. But we need it, we need. But we need it, we need to have a contingency plan for. An adjournment. A recess and without an adjournment. You know, and you look very, very somber when I say those things.
Well, if we're if we're indoors on a weekend. And we start in the morning, we ought to be able to finish before dinner. Under any circumstances.
And that would have to be a Saturday meeting.
I I think it could be Sunday, but I think Saturday is probably preferable for more.
And I think you're gonna run into people objecting who attend religious services on Sunday mornings.
Well, I. I was only saying I think it's legally possible, I don't, I don't think there is a prescription on Sunday. I I I think Saturday is better, obviously.
Well, even 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 on a Sunday, if you're starting at, say, one o'clock. You you'd finish. You you can't run eight hours, people will not stick around for eight hours. I think that's just, that's just too long for folks. I'm concerned about these large facilities and their availability, that's all, I think. I think we we may struggle with a Saturday.
And we may.
I think if you start out at one o'clock on a Sunday, you will, you will finish by. By eight o'clock, I don't see it, I don't see it going six hours.
On a Sunday or a Saturday, Greg?
But e- either way, either one. So I think, I think we should.
Depends on who's playing, I mean.
Right, but I think.
You're just on the bye week for the Patriots, I mean.
Right. So I think we should, you know, test the waters, see what's available. And um, if we need to hold a special meeting just for this topic, then. If we have some definitive information to present to you by next week, then then maybe we do that.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments from the board? So we're gonna test the waters for availability of venues outside of Manchester. Large enough to accommodate up to what number, Alan?
I think four hundred is is safe.
Four hundred with distance.
Yes. I I can, I can be, I can be talked down a little. Wait, I think I think if it's outside of town, it's gonna limit attendance somewhat anyway.
That's unfortunate.
It is.
But I understand the reasons why, so.
Jeff.
Yes, Becky.
Are we talking about looking at both a Saturday and a Sunday, just to see what, you know, give us more options?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would we consider a weekday evening?
Um, we would need to have two weekday evenings. Because I have no doubt that this meeting will go over three and a half to four hours. And that's ten thirty, that's ten thirty or eleven.
Would we consider, I think, for two. Weekday evenings.
I think attendance is gonna suffer if people have to come out twice.
People have to come out twice and go out of town twice, I think we're gonna really run into problems.
Are those problems worse than deciding that we will just not have a fall town meeting?
We don't know.
Cause it looks to me like those are the alternatives.
I I think, I think we don't know the answer to the question, Anne, because we don't know. The square footage of the venue that we need. Um, I think if Alan's willing to do six feet between chairs. Which has not been the case. We'd plan on eight feet, I believe, Alan.
I've I've run it several different ways, I I I think if we have six feet between pairs of chairs, that's good enough. I I'd be interested to know whether whether the board agrees with that.
What was, what was the spacing again?
Six feet between between pairs of chairs.
That that should be quite sufficient.
I'd be comfortable with that.
So Alan has a way of calculating the square footage requirements for something like that.
Yep.
Okay. I wanna um keep moving, cause we still have agenda items here that we need to address. Do we need to discuss? The articles on the warrant, any further that we have so far?
Uh, I think just, sorry, go ahead, Jeff, Greg.
Well, I was just gonna comment on the on the new request. So you have a request from the harbor master concerning um the main workboat, the Eastern. Um, it's it's deemed um unrepairable in terms of the leak and the structural integrity of the boat. Um, it's uh, we've gotten the useful life out of that that vessel and then some. Um, and so the concern, you know, is. Why, why, why now? Um, there's there's quite a lead time on on boats right now. Um, it could take a year and a half. Plus to get a, to get a new boat in, um, so the sooner we can put an order in, the better, so. Harbor Master would would like to see us put an article requesting funding. Um, for 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 a new boat. So this is going against your desire to trim, um, you know, and try to keep things short, it's. So that's just a new, a new potential warrant, uh, article for the warrant.
Jeff, if I may, that's right, John.
Go ahead, Jeff, go go ahead.
Um. As well as the nine, non-binding affordable housing trust article.
So that's one you, that's on there, you tentatively said you were agreeable to having that one on.
I think that's absolutely necessary.
Alright.
For them to proceed to bid. Um, with plans that they've been working out for two years, they need that article.
Uh, Jeff, if I may, my my question was, I I assume that Bayern has kind of looked around and and maybe looked at. It it used boats that kind of meet these specs. And has come up empty, or have you had that discussion with him, uh, Greg?
Yeah, no, Bayern's very good at keeping his eye out for.
Yeah.
For bargains, um, he hasn't, he hasn't found that on on this, in this case.
Okay, I mean, it's kind of a special spec situation, but.
Yes, yeah, so as you see, this is really needed for this, for for shallow water.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for needs, uh, we have a lot of that.
Yeah.
Hi. Yeah, Andy, are you any suggestions for trimming articles that we've initiated?
That you've initiated?
Well, we can't trim, trim citizens petitions.
No, I understand that, um. I I I I think if I understood where the planning board is. The only, the only articles that they're gonna be ready for are renumbering sections of the zoning bylaw. I don't see any pressing need to do that. I think the planning board reorganization could be deferred. I think renaming the board of selectmen could probably be deferred. I think that dissolving the water resource committee could be deferred.
So.
But those are just my thoughts, they're, it's your call.
So to be clear, is it the zoning modifications and deletions of sections of bylaw for case law compliance? Is that something that they're not going to be ready for?
That's my understanding from from Greg, but I'll let him.
Yeah, I mean, they're trying, they're trying to get that one, um. So they have the other renumbering, they have um a new, new use table that they would like to have approved. Again, it's it's just taking existing uses and putting it in a, in a more user-friendly uh table to see on one. One uh spot. Um. Uh, that, again, they're they're working on um sections that are, that are obsolete and should be deleted. Um. They're trying, but they're not, you know, they're not quite there yet. They they hope to get there by the twenty-fifth, um.
Okay, well, my 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 understanding was not correct.
I think that we should defer any trimming to our next meeting. Um, since we haven't even set the date yet.
I agree, um. If we have an indoor venue, then. The trimming has different parameters. Yeah.
I think at this point, we're talking about if we don't get a large indoor venue outside of town. That we're gonna have to defer the entire meeting. Is that correct? Hello?
Who who are you asking?
I'm asking the board.
Everybody.
I'm just asking for four of the members of the board.
That would be my preference.
Yeah, you're right, Jeff. But we've got a pretty big window we're looking at in these other venues, like uh, three to four weeks, starting October thirtieth, just. Run the calendar and let us know what's available.
Yep. Eli?
Yeah, it wouldn't be my preference to do that, I think it's gonna create a variety of train wrecks, um.
I couldn't agree more.
I I. Um.
But what I'm hearing in terms of the volatility of the numbers. Is that none of the venues that are indoors in town work.
No, that's right.
Not not with social distancing.
Correct. And that the tent. Heated and walled. Is not acceptable to several people on the board.
Well, if it's walled.
If it's walled, you're defeating the purpose of being outdoors.
Exactly.
Right.
I I I I think we should, I think one thing that wasn't entirely clear from our visit to the memorial school. Today is whether. We could achieve reasonable social distancing in a combination of the high school, middle school, auditorium and cafeteria. There were, there were some numbers that that uh, the facilities guy at the school was throwing out that. Might make it feasible, so I think we should nail that down. Right away.
Do you add the gymnasium into that?
No.
No.
Jeff?
Becky.
Um, I wanted to, in terms of using different locations, Alan, how does that work? With the um, the clickers, the voter voting clickers?
I I think if we're, I think, and I don't know this for sure, but I think if we're in two rooms. We would need two receiving stations.
Right.
Because they're they're line of sight.
Right.
We certainly have enough clickers.
Yes.
The 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 question would be. How difficult, and I think, I think there's time to add a second. Uh, laptop receiver, but. If Diane is on, she may have a better answer to that.
I believe she is.
I think I saw her earlier.
Okay, I I think that's, I think that that's an issue that doesn't need to be discussed tonight. I I'm sorry, I mean, if Diane wants to jump in on that, but it's it's now. Nine, just after nine fifteen, and we have substantial amounts of agenda to continue to get through, and um. I I'm I'm just worried that we're going off into a lot of other areas. Um, if Alan wants to come up with firm numbers, if you can come up with firm numbers. For the high school, middle school and the cafeteria and or gymnasium. Then. I think cafeteria is probably better um than. That works within the parameters that you're talking about, four hundred people. Um, then we can certainly entertain that. But I I don't wanna get off into. That's, that's a problem that can be solved. Um. And I. I I don't wanna get off into that right now. So we're deferring trimming any articles until October fourth. We're gonna investigate large venues outside of town. Where we could all be in one room together. And we're gonna firm up whether the kind of numbers that Alan's talking about can be accommodated. In the middle school, high school. Including the cafeteria with two systems.
Right, I I I don't think that they can, but I wanna be a hundred percent sure before we go out of town.
Okay, I I think that we should contrast it without a ton anyway, I think we should investigate out of town anyway.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, are we good on this at this point? Okay, cause the vultures are circling the horse. All right, next.
I'm gonna say farewell at that point.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good night, Alan, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Our next article, our next gender item is dispatch next steps and budget implication. So following our dispatch public forum of last Tuesday. Um, do the board, are any members of the board have outstanding issues related to dispatch that they feel? Need to be vetted further?
Jeff?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't have issues except that I, I, I still don't feel I have a comfortable feel for the community and where they're at.
Okay.
Jeff, if I may?
Becky?
Um, I, I, I understand that this should not be a fire versus police situation. And I would hope that it won't be, but I would like to, I mean, we've heard from both chiefs. And we've heard from some dispatch and reserve officers, but we haven't. I, I think that the paramedics and fire department have been very conscientious in their not in, in their approach at this point in time, but I would like to hear from them as well. I'd like to hear their take on it.
Okay. Any other outstanding issues? Okay, Greg.
The fire chief has his hand up.
Oops, I'm sorry. Chief Cleary.
Uh, yes, I just want to address Becky's comment. I, I do believe at one point the firefighters may have sent something to the board or maybe as some of the individual firefighters, but I wanted to understand in what format or how, how she wants them to speak as individuals on behalf of the union. I'm sure almost every firefighter will be happy to give you their opinion. I just want to make sure you get what you're looking for in a format that works for the information you're seeking.
Becky?
Um, I was just waiting for you to say okay. Thank you, chief, and I, I appreciate that and wanting the clarification. I, I, it, I do recall having gotten something quite some time ago, but I, 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 it doesn't matter whether I'm hearing personally, whether I hear from them individually or all together. But I would like to hear their feeling, uh, no, their, their, their professional perspective on how what would be best for them and safest for both them and our community.
I can tell you anecdotally in having talking, talked to the firefighters who most of them have been here for the 10 years that this has been an ongoing process. I could almost say unequivocally, they all support going to the regional. So if you wanted a sense for me and an overarching statement, but I will be happy to put something out to the rank and file tomorrow based on the discussions in this meeting and then have them respond back to the board.
I'm, I'm a little concerned, Becky, about such an invitation to I mean, certainly firefighters have had the option of expressing their, their thoughts about this all along. And we've had two public forums to do that. I'm a little concerned about inviting their input where we haven't specifically invited the input of officers other than the dispatchers. And they approached us.
That's fair.
They approached us and asked to be heard. So it's not that I don't want to hear from the firefighters, but I think that, that we're opening up this more broadly to if we're inviting from, from the firefighters, their thoughts and concerns to also do that with police officers. And I think that does pit one department against the other.
I, I agree. You're right. And I.
And I really would like to avoid that.
I, I think you're right, and it would end up being more divisive. So thank you for talking that through with me. I appreciate that.
Chief Cleary, your hand is still up. Did you want to add a comment to that?
I did. Part of the reason they haven't spoken has been my direction. Uh, it's the same reason I have not written a personal letter much in the way that Chief Fitzgerald submitted a letter. And I've talked with the group and I've kind of been speaking on behalf of the department and talking to the troops. They've had the option of doing letters either as a union or individually, and we've spoken how we haven't wanted to create on us against them, even though the police chief spoke and the dispatchers have sent something in. We've tried to remain silent and just deal with the facts and, and not be opinion oriented. So to some degree, I don't know that it would change any of the facts. But as speaking as a, as the head representative for the department, I can almost say unequivocally that the department supports moving forward with going to the regional. But if we stay investing in the dispatch, so we have two dispatchers 24/7 and all the technologies and upgrades that we need for a comparable service here with input, with training, with additional supervision of the dispatchers and, and the like.
Okay.
Jeff, may I ask a question about that?
Certainly.
To, to do all that and, and create what is in my mind of the utmost importance, which is safety for the town and for our public safety people. Do we, do we have definitive numbers as to what all of that would run? I know we have some, but I don't know if we have all of those that we just, the chief just mentioned.
I'm sorry, Becky, what, what number are you looking for now?
All, all the things that the chief just mentioned. He, he.
So you're asking whether we need those numbers or we have them?
No, we need those numbers, and I don't think we have all of those that, that the chief just went down. We have a lot of numbers, but I, I think everything he just went over is not necessarily been factored in.
I'd like to say I believe it has, but clearly we need to be more specific.
There are a couple of other measures with respect to safety that I put in previous correspondence that haven't been addressed for the dispatch center to meet the NFPA requirements of a dispatch center. Um, it would have to have an upgraded town hall fire alarm. The town hall and dispatch center would need a sprinkler system. Those are structural items that protect the dispatcher and protect the infrastructure that's in, that's in the building that we currently don't have. And I know the sprinkler system hasn't been figured into any part of the infrastructure upgrade to the town hall if dispatch were to stay. It's been primarily focused on one dispatcher versus two. Um, and I believe some of those numbers are in there along with some of the upgrades that would be needed incrementally, three years, five years, seven years, 10 years.
Right.
With radio replacements and such.
Right.
The, the chief said, we did not, we did not add improvements to the building in terms of fire suppression alarm system.
Okay, so we need to pull those numbers together in a very clear and concise way so that residents of the town can have that information. What other steps do we need to be taking? Board members, any other steps that you want to have taken between now and October 4th? When we're going to revisit what are next steps?
Are there any ra- radio communications equipment or software that the, the center has that we do not?
Yes.
Sorry, have they been taken into consideration in the, in the budget comparison?
Some have and some haven't. And the budget comparison that we've presented to the town was a five-year comparison, not a 10-year comparison. So the 270,000 in capital expenditures that has been in that fact sheet is in the first five years. And replacements and upgrades are not included in that figure over a 10-year period.
Within the five years, would we be up to the equip- equipment standard, the equipment available at the dispatch, at the regional center?
It depends on how much of the budget could be voted at town meeting and absorbed within the levy limit.
What would the?
The 270 would get us to the basic equivalent in, in the shorter period. So if you, if you start to project.
Both software and equipment, Greg?
Yes. But if you want to look at, you know, if you, you start extending another five years, then, then you, you you'll need to spend a similar amount. If not a little more, you actually spend a little more because some of, some of the modules that the, the council at dispatch would be replaced. That, that, that's a, that's a new replacement, so it's, it's good for five plus years right now, but as someone mentioned at the last meeting, technology, uh, technology changes tend to quicken rather than stretch out.
Okay, so we need to, we need to really clearly develop the projections over a 10-year period to take those things into account. So we have full cost to full cost.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's gonna be some guesswork on a 10-year projection. It's, it's tough to nail down real figures over a 10-year period, but we can, we can do better than what we have.
One other thing.
Sorry, Anne, go ahead.
Could we go through the feasibility study for Ipswich and come up with at least an estimate of what on bringing Ipswich onboard will cost them and use that as a basis for a projection of what it might cost Manchester in 10 years if they decided to recoup all of their costs?
No, that's a, that's a, that's a good suggestion. We can, we can take a look at that.
That would, that would be one answer to the complaint that we don't have any idea what we're getting into.
Jeff, if I may?
Go ahead, Becky. And then I want to try and bring, I want to try and bring this to a conclusion.
Okay, I just asked that when we're compiling this, that I, I'd also like to see it done to, because we, to the specs that the fire department would be comfortable with.
I think Chief Cleary has made it very clear that um, it's not a matter of comfort, it's a matter of meeting the standard.
Okay, that's, thank you for the clarification, yes. And, but just if they were to stay in town, what would those specifics be?
Okay. Okay, anything else on next steps? Now, one next step that we haven't talked about is that we could vote when we vote on moving ahead or not. And if we vote to move ahead, we're moving ahead to feasibility study and whether that's something that we would want to consider doing to fully understand the proposal from NoSure 911. I'm gonna hold that, but I want to keep that on your plate. Uh, we're not gonna discuss that tonight. Okay.
So we're gonna be making a decision like three different paths. One is to go to, um, look to going into the feasibility study with the regional.
Right.
Two is to upgrade our facility to meet the fire department's requests. And three is, well, do nothing or some partial set of that collection. One thing I want to be clear about is if we do the route where we go to the fire department's request, whether or not the numbers that we're going to be dealing with are going to trigger prop two and a half override. And if they look like they are, then typically for a prop two and a half override, a large do it once override is better than otherwise. So I'd like to know what the scope of that might actually look like. And whether or not we would be anticipating wanting to do that this year or next year or what.
That gets into other areas of the budget.
Well, I guess the first.
If we're looking out over a 10-year period, that gets into other areas of the budget. That gets into other areas of the budget. Including. Um, the possibility of um. Budget issues related to the building of. Essex Elementary School.
Right, so I guess what I want to do is if we're, if we're gonna be making the decision between one of these two, two or three different pathways on the fourth. That we, uh, if we are in fact, if we decide to commit to staying in-house and beefing the place up to what the um. Uh, fire department needs. Then um. I think that we should be. Committing to a particular course of action, and if that includes a prop two and a half override or. Uh, that we, uh, something that we project is going to require a prop two and a half override. That we commit to it in that vote and under what sort of time frame?
Good. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna uh, move on to the next item, but before we do that. Town council has been patiently waiting. For us to conclude this meeting and uh. We have another major topic on our agenda, and we have the consent agenda, we have the town administrator's report. Uh, before we can get to executive session, which is what's going to involve town council. And I've had a suggestion from Greg that we release the town council from. Sitting and watching us. Go through all those discussions and take up. Um, the issues of that executive session on October 4th. Any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay, Greg. I'm sorry to have kept. Michelle waiting in the wings all this time. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is um. A possible letter to DHCD. The Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, related to. The placement of. The Powderhouse Lane. Apartments. Um, onto the. Subsidized housing inventory. And that. Currently. DHCD regulations and practice have been. That apartments such as the ones on Powderhouse Lane. Cannot be moved on to. SHI. The subsidized housing inventory. Without. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Greg, without vacay. You're muted, Greg.
Sorry, um, correct, be vacated and then be um, open to a uh. Fair Housing Lottery process. For, for um, deciding who. Uh, will occupy the unit.
Right. Um, you wanna? Add anything to this in terms of us beginning a discussion of the uh. And there's a second issue, there's a sub. Subissue to this agenda item. Which says SHI process update. And um, that uh.
Which, which I pushed. And in light of what um, Alan said, I, I think. That's a long winding road that's not. Going to get us where we need to go.
I wouldn't mind hearing that part first before we discuss the possible letter, but uh. Or Anne, we, sorry, Jeff. Anne, were you suggesting that we didn't need to do that this, at this point, or?
What I'm. Go ahead, Greg.
Well, you, you're welcome. I don't mean to jump in, you're, you're welcome to go ahead. So what, what I think Anne has referred to is, is, is what um. Alan Wilson mentioned earlier, and I was going to include in my town administrator update. Uh, we did hear today, we haven't received it, but we heard that the um, Mass, Mass Housing has issued. Um, a letter of eligibility for, for the SLV proposal. Um, which means that that is a green light for them to submit their comprehensive permit application to the um. To the, to the ZDA. And so I'm assuming that that is what they will do. And I would imagine that that'll happen um, relatively quickly. I, I don't know the exact timing, of course. We haven't heard yet from SLV. Um, in the letter of eligibility that Mass Housing. Um, wrote, I, I did a quick, quick review of it today, uh, just before the meeting. Um, they, they do highlight many of the concerns that both the town raised in its letter and. And what other residents submitted. To um. To Mass Housing. Um, basically, they're saying, we, we recognize these many concerns and the developer would. Do well to try to address as many of them as they can, as they get ready for their application. Before the, uh, before the zoning board. It, it's not surprising, it's what we anticipated to hear from Mass Housing, they typically say. Uh, we don't yea or nay a project, we just allow it to go to the next step at this stage. So a project eligibility letter is, is, is a green light to go to the next phase, but it is not final approval. Um, from the state. Um, it means that the process goes to that next level, which is the comprehensive permit review. Um, before the ZDA. The developer, uh, as soon as that application is submitted, then um. If we don't, if we don't have our SHI numbers or subsidized housing inventory numbers. Um. Up to a certain level, then, then we are not able to. Um, deny the comprehensive permit request based on. Having made adequate progress um. On our affordable housing. Um, so it would be too late once that is submitted. Uh, once the application is submitted, uh, we, that window has closed for the town. So that's been a bit of the race that uh.
It is closed in regard to this 40B application.
E- exactly right. That is correct.
And, and are you talking about the 10% number, or are you talking about substantial progress number?
I'm talking about the substantial progress, so you can make yearly progress, so our number is. Um, 11 or so units a year. To make adequate progress. Um, and so obviously, if, if some of the Powderhouse Lane apartments could have been added to the SHI. Even just a, some of them, um, you know, 11 out of the 29, that obviously would have, would have helped. So it'd be very difficult to, to achieve that. In what I assume to be. A uh. A rapidly closing window of time. But I'm open to others' comments and other suggestions on, on ways that that might. Still possible.
Um, when I asked that this be considered, um. I was working. I was using the very considerable efforts that, that Jody Morris has put into it, she's talked to a dozen. People and ve- varying from the Gloucester Housing Authority to. Um, officials at DHCD, um. And it appears that in some circumstances, it is possible to get unit according. To what she has heard, it is possible to get some units on without. Um, displacing the current tenants. But given that we are now facing probably a two week window, um. I don't see how we can. We can pursue those um. Small bits. Of, of, of hope. Um. And I think I would like to get that, the letter, I think the letter is our best hope, and, and I would like to get that.
So I think, um, I know that uh. I've been trying to catch up with Jody, I haven't had a chance to get her, uh, to speak to her directly, I believe she's on the call this evening. So, Jeff, if you wanted her to. To comment briefly than the, the chief prerogative.
Jody, can you? Add some brief comments here in terms of. Specific information that you've heard from DHCD?
Yes, I will be very brief. Um, as Anne said, I've spoken to many, many people over the last week or so. And uh, the only person I spoke to at the DHCD. Um, was a woman who's in charge of policy, Alana Murphy. She made it very clear that with a LIFER and LAU. Uh, the units do have to um, have a turnover before they're, before they would be eligible to put on the SHI. So I went down the route of, is there something that we can do that's not a LIFER and LAU? And that's when I came up with what I thought, because it was a potential loophole of using home funds and going directly um. To the DHCD with an application for the SHI without. Doing the LIFER or the, or the LAU. I feel, I mean, I spoke to Anne, you know, literally a couple of hours ago, saying, um, I didn't get anything definitive. Um, I did, I did get um. A uh, determination from, not determination, really, that sounds too official. But the word was from the Home Consortium, which is a group based in Be- in Peabody, of which Manchester is a member. We are eligible for home funds. And I was told that if we use those home funds, we would be able to get into the SHI with a very simple. Uh, application. Um, I talked to Anne, I think one of the issues that we have, and I think regardless of what's happening with SLV. Uh, what is important for this SHI in general is that we need to have someone in the town. Who actually owns this as their responsibility, and I don't really think we have that right now. Um, I'm not sure who, uh, you know, has the wherewithal to get funds from the. Um, from the Home Consortium, and who knows enough about the SHI process to be able to take that on, but I've been kind of doing it as a. You know, just as a member of the community, because I'm very interested, obviously, in this whole area of Powderhouse Lane, and. Also, my husband and I, Bar and I, own a, a building in Manchester that could potentially be added to the SHI at some point, so. I started doing all this research, I agree with Anne, I think the letter needs to go out. Regardless of what's happening with SLV, needs to go out to the. DHCD, and I think we should continue to work on understanding better as a town how we can manage this process.
So. How is it, Jody, do you understand how it is that? Applying for and using home funds. Would. Circumvent the um. LAU LIF requirement.
Yeah, the idea is that the home funds become the subsidizing agency. And the home funds are designed in many ways to. Uh, be dealing with renovations as opposed to new construction, it can be both ways, but the, the idea of renovation of. Tenants being in place in a building is very much in keeping with the home funds, whereas the Fort and Whole 40B. Comprehensive permit piece is really designed almost exclusively for new construction. So if you can get the home funds and you can use those to um, to renovate units. I was told by the Home Consortium in, in Peabody that you literally have. Three requirements, you have to have an apartment that has an affordable price, you have to have a tenant in place that is income eligible. And you have to have the subsidizing agency. You do need to have the restriction, you're gonna say, you're gonna, the deep restriction is gonna be sent to the DHCD at the same time. You send that in, and within 72 hours, you get a response as to whether they've been admitted. Sounded pretty fabulous to me. Um, there are issues around how North Shore Community. Uh, North Shore CBCs would handle that, whether they um, would be able to use the funds to, to renovate some of the. Apartments and so forth, and I, I don't feel comfortable, like, right this minute, telling you, yes, this can be done, I know exactly how. To do it, so I'd like to work further with Nikki on this, work further with the group in Peabody on this, and see whether maybe we can come up with something.
Okay, um. That, that was my next question. Um, have you had conversations with Mickey Nor?
I, I have, I have, and his. I will tell you that Nikki is, um, is very good at what he does. Um, he says he had never heard of a LIFER allowed before this whole project happened, so. He's not an SHI person, he's not a process person from that standpoint, which is like, where I come back to. You need somebody in the town, either a town employee or somebody on a, a board. Um, to, to own this, whether it's the MHT or, or um, possibly Sue Brown or, or somebody who needs to understand this process. And really, I think, take it on as their responsibility, and I've been missing that, I mean, I think that. That has not happened, it, it's not North Shore CBC's. Um, job to do that, they never do that, they don't really care about the SHI, they just want to have, you know, affordable units, so. If this is gonna work for us as a town, I think we need to have some focus.
And have you had any conversations with? With the Affordable Housing Trust about this?
Um, I have, I talked to John on Thirback, and I don't know if he's on this call at this point. I actually, I guess I spoke to him on Sunday, it's today, today, Monday. Um, I spoke to him on Sunday, and he said that they had not really done anything as it relates to home funds and as it relates to. Um, application for the SHI. If, if I could just add one thing, the only thing I would say about the letter um, to the DHCD. Is I was a little confused, it seemed to me that the main point of the letter was that we. Uh, the DHCD wanted us to be in compliance with the fair housing marketing. Um, but the whole first paragraph talked about the problem as related to the actual subsidy. And so I, there, to me, there was a little bit of a disconnect between the whole introduction of. Uh, asking them to broaden their threshold requirements to include locally subsidized affordable housing. Um, because those are not eligible for LIF. Or allow, and then the rest of it's all about fair, the, the marketing side of it, so. I'm. I didn't really have a chance to, you know, be able to kind of go over this more carefully, uh, because I just got a copy of this letter a few hours ago, but. I guess we could send it out as is, but I, I, I thought it, you know, needed to be focused on the fair housing piece, because clearly the fair housing. Policy is going to be in place for any new units, I think our argument is. We're not that far out of compliance with what the DHCD wants in terms of SHI eligibility. All we're saying is that if people are already in place that meet those requirements from an income standpoint, and we have the fair housing. Process in place, our argument is, isn't that a better way of, of actually following their mission of expanding our um, SHI?
Okay. Eli, do you want to comment on um? On what Jody just said about the letter? You've done a lot of work on that letter.
Yeah. So. First of all, let's go, go to the issue, the, the question of sending out the letter as it is. I think that the Affordable Housing Trust. Talking to uh, one or two people. I think there's a strong interest among their members of seeing the, the letter that's gonna be going out, reasoning being. The project that they've been working on for the past couple. Reason being, the project that they've been working on for the past couple of years to get involved significant interaction with DHCD. And they would like to know what it is we're asking DHCD and how it might potentially affect their interactions with DHCD in the coming years when they're asking for their support. So I think that whatever we do here, we do need to let them take a look and critique it. Talking with some town staff and going through the letter and editing it over the past few days. There are some questions about whether or not it's something that DHCD would really and whether or not we can make a strong argument with that letter. So I think I think we need to talk about the some of those points in the land. It isn't, is now the time you want to talk about the letter or?
Well, I agree with you heartily about the Affordable Housing Trust reviewing a correspondence that the Board of Selectmen would do with the DHCD. The question that I'm wondering is, do we want to put together? Or have Affordable Housing Trust put together a letter to DHCD that addresses the three components that Jody was just talking about? Because what she heard from DHCD when she talked to them was LIPR or forget it. Is that correct, Jody?
That's correct. No, I did not specifically talk to them about the home funds piece because I talked to this other person after that call, so.
Okay, okay. So I, my suggestion is that that doesn't come from you, but that that comes from either the Affordable Housing Trust or the Board of Selectmen to DHCD. That that question posing that question. We understand that there is this, there is this funding source called home funds and that if we were to proceed to use home funds, we could renovate while people are in place and include people on those units on SHI.
That's my understanding.
And just to confirm that somewhere in DHCD, someone understands a process that you're saying has led to the issuance of or the acceptance of units onto the town's SHI by going through that process. So somebody's not talking to somebody within DHCD, it appears. But I don't feel like I'm in the position to write that letter. I think a Affordable Housing Trust should be writing it in conjunction with North Shore CDC, the owners of the property. Thank you for all the information you just provided to us. I agree with you that we need to have more clarity in terms of whose point on this. I am concerned that much of what's happened is sidestepping the Affordable Housing Trust up to this point. And that they need to be front and center in the middle of this. Driving the bus. So Eli, you asked me, do I want to go over this letter? It's 10:10 or 10:06 at night and I can't think of anything I would like to do more. But there's been a lot of work that's been put into this letter so far. And I think it's important to review it now so that we can hand it over to Affordable Housing Trust for them to take a look at it and make some decisions about the disposition of this letter. But I'm talking about a second letter from the town of Manchester. Could be from the town administrator's office and not from the Board of Selectmen directly or the Affordable Housing Trust directly. But I think it would carry more weight if it came from one of those two groups that addresses the three legs of the stool that Jody was just talking about. And that could get us to more units on SHI than we have now. And I, you know, whatever happens with 40B, SLV's 40B application and for a comprehensive permit, this still needs to go forward. We still need to have more affordable housing in this town. And SLV's whole project doesn't provide truly affordable housing in the town. I'm thinking things that people can really afford to live. So.
And that project is is multi-years away.
Multi, yes. Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, Becky.
If we are talking about sending this over to the Affordable Housing Trust, they don't they're not meeting for another eight days or so, right?
Correct. I don't have, I don't have the the calendar in front of me to answer that question. You obviously have looked at it. So if you're not meeting for another eight days, I'll accept that as this the case. And
Okay.
And then?
I'm just wondering if this is something that that I definitely think it needs to be seen by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Absolutely, yes.
I'm just
How much more work do we do on it at this point? I mean, Eli's done, Eli's done some significant cleaning up. And we've had other comments that have come in as well. Including comments from town council on it. And I think that we, the question is, how far do we go with it? Before we hand it over to Affordable Housing Trust? I don't want to hand them, here, here's these scraps of paper with different edits on it. I'd like to hand them something that was emerging from the original letter as considered by the Board of Selectmen and and town council and town administrator.
Agreed.
Jody?
Yes, I'm sorry to weigh in. I actually have done a redraft of the letter. And if I, I know I don't want to do this at this meeting because it's, you know, obviously redraft. But if if I could send that to the Board of Selectmen, I'd be happy to do that. My major change is for the focus on the the fair housing piece. And the other major change that I made was to make, instead of saying that we're asking for a policy change, make that a little bit softer with for your consideration, although we certainly believe that fair housing marketing plan is extremely important. We think that the units can be added to the SHI at the same time that we have a fair market housing plan, fair housing market plan in place. And then I actually positioned all of the reasons why this is good as opposed to what's wrong with their current policy. So in other words, if we make that, if we have all these units be able to be placed now, what are the benefits? How does that support their current, their current mission? How does it support? How is it consistent with everything that they're asking for in terms of the three-legged stool? And and kind of pose and frame the argument that way as opposed to, you know, this is inconsistent with your policy or this doesn't, it's a little bit more positive. So that's what I worked on doing later this afternoon.
Okay. Before we go into talk at all further about this letter, is there consensus in the board that we put together a separate letter that addresses the questions that are raised about the Fair Housing Fund, I'm going to butcher the name, but the fund that Jody talked about.
The home, the home funds?
The home fund. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm certainly interested.
My thought is that that letter, which is a letter of inquiry, precedes anything that comes out of this letter.
Yeah, I think that's an independent thing. And it certainly is a letter of inquiry. I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to do.
And but that it precedes this letter.
Well, it precedes a matter of priority or as a precursor?
A precursor.
Well, I've used them as.
I don't want to combine it all together. I'd like to just have an inquiry about confirming the details of what Jody has come up with.
I agree with that. In in the the current form, the current letter takes us a different approach. And it you're possibly talking about recasting the current letter in the frame of whatever comes back from DHCD on an inquiry over the home funds. Is that that what you're talking about?
Actually, yes.
So so I might suggest that that I could, I could work on just a phone call or maybe emails in the next day or two to confirm the home fund approach. I'd love to pick Jody's brain a little bit if I can have it being connected tomorrow. And then I can follow up with DHCD people and confirm that. And confirm my understanding with a follow-up email. I think that can happen, you know, the next day or two. And in the meantime, we can consider continued drafts of of the original letter. But they can, they can proceed in parallel paths.
Jeff, I'm not sure if you see, but Danny Hall has his hand up.
I do. Hang on just one second then. Does the board want Greg to pursue that path?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And yes.
Okay. Greg, we would like you to pursue that path. Danny?
Thanks, guys. Would it make sense to have that letter that was drafted quite carefully by North Shore CDC and their and their council come from North Shore CDC instead of the town? Would that make it simpler? There was a lot of thought given to that specific language in the in the in the document, in that letter that were specifically designed to hit some of the hot buttons for DHCD. Because you're basically asking him for a policy change. And
And Danny, if I can, if I can respond to what you're saying, and I would ask the sense of the board about this as well. We cannot prevent CDC, North Shore CDC from from doing what you just suggested. At this point, we would strongly urge them not to do that. Because there are a lot of other things that have been going on for a period of time that we're trying to get accomplished related to affordable housing in town. And and changing DHC, going after DHCD to change their policy from our point of view, where we don't have anything close to an SHI that is 10%. I think would handicap those other efforts. That, that, that's my initial response and I would be happy to entertain any other board member who wants to respond to what Danny just suggested. We cannot say, no, we don't want you to do that. But seriously, we don't want you to do that at this point.
Okay, I just thought it was an alternative.
Yes, I understand. I understand divorcing it from, from, from town government is one thing. But I don't think DHCD is going to divorce the letter from CDC, North Shore CDC, from town government. They're going to, they're going to see this as Manchester and affordable housing. And why should we even listen to them? Because they have 5% subsidized housing inventory. I hope you understand that I'm not trying to, you know, put shackles on what you might do or what North Shore CDC might do, but I don't think that DHCD is going to separate us out from as cleanly as as you would like.
Okay, look, it's, we're trying to do the right thing for the town.
I thank you.
We'll defer to you on that.
Yeah, I, I, I thank you for all that you guys have done for the town and and the miraculous job that was done to raise funds to secure Powderhouse Lane. There's more, there's more to do. There's a lot more to do. But I'd like to be able to, even though it may feel like a snail's pace to people who are outside of the boards and and town hall. I'd like to be able to proceed from a unified perspective as a town with with a state agency that is not been truly our friend in this whole process.
Right.
So I didn't mean to cut you off, Danny, but that and again, I would ask any other board member who wants to add to or shift what I just said to let me know that you want to speak. Danny, did you have any else, anything else that you wanted to add to what you said?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking the question. I appreciate that. And all trying to row the boat in the same direction and not end up going.
Yeah.
Okay. How do you want to have this discussion about this letter?
So was that a question?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so. The parts that I've got questions on that, you know, from staff and from other people mostly surround, I guess, under the policy recommendations. Item number two, where it says processes created the effect of incentivizing owners to encourage the conviction and displacement of all residents, including qualified residents. That's if the objective of the developer is to get those units listed on the SHI. Developer is to get those units listed on the SHI. Correct? So. Developer is interested in simply developing. Mostly it's the towns that are interested in generating SHI numbers, not necessarily develop. So. I have a little trouble with this paragraph, understanding how this can come from the town and fly with DHCD. And not come off as. Sounding as a little bit of a contrived. Argument for. Why we want them to change their policy. And my concern is that. Going into the HCD wouldn't in that mode. Might. Produce a negative effect in the long run with our relationship with the HCD. So that's that's the part of this letter, one of the major parts of the letter where I'm having. Trouble with it as it stands. The other parts, some of the other parts are really quite interesting with respect to. The cost effectiveness of dealing with the naturally effective naturally occurring. Affordable house. And the. For housing laws, that other section, I don't quite know how to. Put my name to that as being a legitimate. Prom to stand on. So I'd like to hear what other board members have to say about that.
Yeah, I can comment on that. Eli. Jeff. Well. I will speak. I read that paragraph and I had the same concern that you did, like incentivizing is the wrong word. Because, you know, it's like the policy is is trying to get these. I, you know, is is trying to or encouraging property owners to. Displace residents and. Build build upscale buildings in their in their properties. I might use the word enable. Effective enabling owners and developers who may own or acquire rather than incentivize. So it. It certainly gives them an opportunity, but it's not necessarily encouraging them.
Other board members?
Jeff, for me. Yeah, I. That one concerned me just from the perspective of. Not wanting to. Anger anybody. Or get them. On the defensive and I kind of. While I agree with what it what you said. I think that we have to. You know. Maybe even like John said, use as opposed to incentivizing, even though that's exactly what it does. But try to find a word that would not be perceived as. Poking the bear.
Is there something softer than enable? I don't know.
I thought enable is pretty good. Or even just allows.
I have, yes, I have lots of troubles with the letter. But. And I'm sensitive to the future relationship between the town and DHCD. Unfortunately. I. Got the letter fairly late this afternoon. And I I haven't. Studied it hard enough to to. Really make a coherent comment other than. It. Asking the state agency to change its policy. Has to be done with great care.
Okay. One of my concerns about asking. I'll come to you in a minute. One of my concerns about asking a state agency to change their policy is that it's not a fast process. And what we're seeking. Is. Some relief from. Other developers who might come here with other 40 B projects. In addition to. In addition to the SOB project. That don't address affordable housing, but do meet developers needs. Jody.
Thank you very much, Jeff. So this is just one example of kind of turning this whole thing on its head instead of saying what's wrong with the policy. That it incentivizes or enables or whatever developers to do, you know, evict tenants. I just reworded it by by having the opposite. What we're trying to do is allow developers to put these units on the SHI. So I wrote. By allowing owners and developers to include in place, income qualified tenants in the SHI. There will be no reason for those long term tenants to be evicted from the units to be included in the in order for them to be included in the SHI. Read that very well, but in other words, just kind of flip it by by saying this is what we suggest. This is what we want you to consider doing. Allowing these units to be put in the SHI, and then that's going to preclude. This risk of eviction as opposed to your policy is going to. Enable them to be convicted, evicted. Yeah, and I'm and I, again, I think for your consideration, it seems like a reasonable request. And if we find out, you know, that there are these examples with home funds that basically does just that, allows these units to stay on the SHI. Or to be put put on, I should say. By allowing that. What we're asking, good things will happen as opposed to bad things are happening by your policy. That's what I mean. I just kind of turned it around.
I think that's a message that I could get behind a lot more easily.
So so we're not really saying anything about policy at all. Here's a situation and here are these folks. And we don't want to displace them. And they can come to the conclusion that, well, maybe the policy isn't such a good policy after all.
Yeah, we're basically saying let these units go onto the SHI. That should be considered. And for the past, for the following reasons. Number one, we allow it to be on the SHI, then the developers won't have to evict people. If we. Allow by allowing this, then that means renovating and repurposing existing properties is the most economical way to go. There are all these benefits to doing this, but I think if we. Frame it that way, it has very different feeling. Now, Denny, I know has talked to, you know. Nikki put this together and and got a lot of input from some people who understand the D. DHCD, and I'm the first one to admit I don't. Understand them, but. I think framing it in a way that makes the board feel comfortable saying these things is also important.
I I agree with Jeff that if if you get the the policy word in front of them, they'll say, oh, we've got a policy and this is the role. And then that gets them thinking perhaps in the wrong direction.
I for one would very much like to see Jody's draft. Um. The. I can't. The letter is is long. We have problems with tone. We have problems with. The. Trying to do an inversion. And as you said earlier, Jeff. Well, now it's 10:30 and I think if we. I suggest that we send the letter. As in its current state. The Affordable Housing Trust for their comments and simultaneously try to and look at at Jody's draft. And and see what what can be done to. Produce something that we can get behind.
I think that's the goal of the letter. Is, and I understand, and that's also. As a dollar would say, a motion to cut off debate. I, but I think it's really important to look at the goal of this letter. The the goal of the letter. Is to try and get. The units that exist. Onto SHI. The units at Powder House Hill. Onto SHI. And I'm not sure. That the path to that goal is best served by suggesting that the THCD should change their policies. Mostly because I don't think we have the time. To go through what it takes to make that kind of sausage. And. They're not of the mind where they're going to be listening to much of anything from Manchester by the city. At least. My perspective is that.
Jeff.
If we had a 12% SHI already, and we said, these are the changes we'd like to see, they might listen to us. Go ahead, Eli.
Honey, you may be right. I think it's a long shot and was considered a long shot from the outset. I would say that I have very strong reservations about the letter in its current form. However. The approach that Jody has outlined. To me. And the concerns that I have are that we could present something and it would be perceived as. You know, a transparent. Attempt at a long shot, whereas. I think that something of the tone that Jody is proposing. Feels a lot better to me. It's a much more constructive thing, and I don't think it's the sort of thing that would potentially jeopardize. Our relationships with DHCD. So I also would be interested in seeing. That draft. It sounds like a very interesting approach. I think it's fine for us to send this off to. This letter off to the Affordable Housing Trust. I agree, it's a very long shot. I would be. I would, even even if I don't think the Affordable Housing Trust is going to come back with. A lot of positive comments about the letter in its current form. And I'm not sure that it would help me resolve my issues with the current letter. So, having said that, I don't know what the benefit would really be. But the way, again, the Jody's approach doesn't sound like it would, to me, would jeopardize from the the rough feel of it. Doesn't sound like it to me would jeopardize our position with DHCD. And yeah, it's a long shot, but.
Okay, so what's the best way? For us to proceed? I feel that we should have. I I'm thinking about this and I'm thinking about. Whether we should be trying to redo this with. Somebody from SEMA. But you know, I don't know how wide we why did that we want to. Cast here, but somebody from SEMA, somebody from North Shore CDC. Two board members and Jody. That's a lot of people to write a letter. And I know that a lot of effort went into the original letter. Not just from what. What Danny shared with us, but but also just from reading the original letter. But we're moving in a very. Different kind of direction. And again, I come back to what's the goal here? What are we trying to accomplish in this communication with DHCD? And I hear one goal is, don't tick them off. I hear another goal saying, we really need to get this to move. Towards an acceptable path for getting. Units such as the units at Powder House. I'm not just saying the units at Powder House. But such as the units at Powder House, because I'm also thinking about the the property that that Jody and Guy have. And other properties that exist in town that we might be able to move in this direction if we had such a path. Greg's going to do what he needs to do. To. Clarify. The information that Jody shared earlier. With DHCD, but what's the goal of this letter and how can we best reach that goal? So I don't know. I want to come back to, I don't know how wide we want this to be or whether we want to. Just keep it to. To board members and. Greg and Jody. I, you know, I'm not sure. Like to hear. Go ahead, Anne.
And just going to say that I don't see that there's a problem with having. The two goals of not. Poking bear. And getting a change. I don't think there's a contradiction there. You poke the bear, you don't get your change. So, but yeah, I I think. I I think. I'd be willing to be one of the board members involved in that.
Like to try and draw this. To a close. With a plan that sounds in a charge for that plan. Not just rewrite the letter, but. Let's try and address these issues. And the scope of the participants. So Anne saying that she would like to be involved. Is there another board member wants to Eli? Is there another board member wants to, Eli, do you want to continue on this?
Yeah, I'll continue.
Okay. Danny, I was waiting for that hand to go up.
Well, I'm just thinking, since this would affect North Shore CDC. I think it might be prudent to invite them to participate in that as well.
Okay. Would you want to be part of it as well, Danny?
I can be, I can do that or we can get somebody from SEMA to do that, yeah.
But let's. Actually, there's another direction that this can all go in because I'm suggesting that this letter gets put together. And then we go to Affordable Housing Trust. Maybe we draw in the Affordable Housing Trust right away. Yeah. So. Greg, I'd like to suggest that we, we reach out to Mickey North. North Shore CDC. That the two board members who have spoken up, Jody. And Mickey, if he's willing and able and available. And I don't know whether John or Muffin or. One of the other members of the Affordable Housing Trust wants to get in on this letter at this point. But do you think that they need to review this letter before it goes out? So. I don't want it to be unwieldy. I'd like to see it get done, but. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking, there's two paths. One is. The two board members. Jody and somebody from North Shore CDC. Sit down. And. The second path is we include, ask, ask to have Affordable Housing Trust include someone now. Or we wait, write a letter and send it to Affordable Housing Trust for their comments.
Jeff, if I may.
Yes.
I really feel strongly that the Affordable Housing Trust needs to be involved. Right now with this. I, I think that, you know, they've been working long and hard for years now. And I did, that's, I feel they must be involved right away.
Okay. I'm, I'm also. Trying to avoid waiting for an Affordable Housing Trust meeting that they decide who's going to be on the, the letter group and then it gets dragged out. I think we're going to approach them and ask them that question.
Yeah, and. I don't think they need to actually meet in order for us to get input from one of them. So we can pick, pick one and. Talk to them about that letter. And then they can, when the, the present draft of it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Who's going to draft?
Who's going to what?
Who's going to, who's going to be the original draftman or woman?
Well, we're operating on Jody's. Proposed direction because it speaks to our interest. So I would suggest that we look at the first draft from Jody.
You okay with that, Charlie?
I'm, I'm okay with that. This better be good what I came up with, but yeah, I'll be happy to.
You just have to be willing to take feedback.
I'm very willing to take feedback. This has been, you know, my career has been getting people to edit stuff, so I'm very, very open to that as well.
That's why I'm staying out of this because I'm a very harsh editor. Okay. Does that give us a plan and an action of action that we can all live with? To get going?
I think so.
How do we, how do we all get together? How does, how does this work?
We pick a time and we can do it over Zoom easily enough, I think.
Great. Okay.
Yeah. Pick a time tonight, Eli?
I'm not going to work on it tonight.
No, no, I mean, that's not what I mean. Pick a time tonight for the future.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that we should start in as quickly as possible, but we need, we're going to need to contact. You know, people for their availability. What I think is we should just send out an email to all the different people involved and say. Here are some proposed times and as early as. Just assume that we're not going to be able to start on it tomorrow, aim for Wednesday and start with a bunch of times after that.
Okay, so. Anne or Eli, who's going to send out the email?
I'll, I'll write that email soon.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything further? I appreciate all the effort from all the different parties that has gone into trying to get to this. Kind of communication. I, I think it's really important that. We find a path to be able to list units without having to go through a developer the size of SOV. And. Greg, I hope that you can provide information to that working group about what you find out. In your communication with DHCD regarding. The funds that Jody was referring to. Okay.
Yep, we'll do.
All right. The next item in our agenda is the consent agenda, which has the minutes from September 8th. The resignation of Jennifer Dome from the Cultural Council because of other pressing work that she has. The request for an overnight on Singing Beach from the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts. The Small Business Person of the Year proclamation, which was awarded earlier tonight to Ken Davis of. KPN Savings and. The single precinct authorization form. Which is to retain our configuration as a single precinct for voting purposes. Any items on the consent agenda that you want to have pulled out?
I just have a question on the minutes from, for Gail. That I sent her and I just wanted to see if she was able to find anything out on that.
Gail, are you still on this call? Apparently not.
Yeah, numbers there.
Your number there?
Yeah, I had to find my mute, my button. I just come and mute, but.
Becky's pressing your buttons, Kim.
I am. It's what I do. I'm a button presser.
Okay, so did you get those?
I have not, I have not listened to that, however, I will listen to that and add a sentence to the minutes. It's not particularly substantive.
It's not at all.
Okay, if it's not substantive, then we're not going to pull it out. We'll, we'll pass on it tonight in that non-substantive that it can happen.
No, we can do it as amended because I sent in my amendments.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got three seconds, which is about as much time as we can have to get a motion to adjourn. Town administrators report.
Need to vote on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm trying to move fast, Eli. Motion, there's a motion and a second. Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Turnover, yes. Tom, meaning. Report, we're getting punchy at the south.
Indeed, indeed, indeed. I'll be brief. So on the staff in front, our staffing front. Sergeant report that Sonia Nathan will be moving on. She's taking another job. Working at the Swamp Scout Senior Center. So we will miss her. She'll be finishing up with us next week on the 28th. We do have some temporary help coming in to help out. And we also have our new special projects and grant coordinator starting up and, and she'll be able to help out. With some of the admin work as well. So Sue Croft will be starting up with us next week. And moving into that new role, which will be very helpful. Looking forward to that. We're interviewing a leading candidate to replace Jenny Thompson. Jenny's been with us for many, many, many years, 20 some odd years, 25 or so, maybe more. And as our principal assessor and will be looking to find someone to try to fill her shoes. We also have changes at the sewer plant coming up. The wife will be, will be retiring in another few weeks, middle of, middle of October. So transitions all around and working, working to replace, place these folks with. Some good folks as, as well, but we'll certainly miss the good work of, of all of these folks. The Center Street, the dam and cover project gave an art, gave an update in my article in the Cricket last week. About the project, it's still a ways off in terms of actual construction, but as we have discussed a bit on and off. It'll be very important that we think, think through the. Communication pieces and how we manage the disruptions that it'll inevitably cause. And so we'll have more on that as, as time gets closer. Certainly over the winter and into the spring, we'll be working harder on those details as that project advances. I hope to have. A compost project. I meant a couple of times, a little, little delayed in, in getting that reviewed, but. Aiming to have you get that approved in October now, I, I hope this evening, but it was not quite ready. Still, still having the lawyers look that over. We'll be having that before you sue. Next, at your next meeting, we'll have both. Police chief, time to show it in to talk more in detail about some of the community, community policing efforts. He has underway in the department and talk specifically about traffic calming efforts as well. And have some thoughts from both. Both the police chief and our DPW director. And then finally, you did hear earlier this evening, we talked about the, the mass housing certificate of eligibility. The letter of eligibility, I should say, for SOV so that we anticipate getting a full application in fairly soon. But we'll keep you posted on that. So I think that'll be enough for now. A couple of other notes there, but you can, you can read them on your own.
Any questions about the? Greg's report? Okay. Then I would also like to. Intertend a motion for adjournment.
Some of.
Second.
Yes.
Moved, moved by Becky and seconded by Eli. Becky's already voted. John?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Thank you. Cheerful, yes. Unanimous. Thank you for, for hanging in there, those of you who aren't just, who aren't just video. Representations of yourself, but are real people behind those names. Okay, thank you, Greg. Good night.
Night. Thank you.